It's 5:45, we'll call the meeting to order. We do have a call on present. And we'll start with the city manager on workshop.
So you guys saw a workshop a couple of meetings ago on the performance dashboard, and you said it was one of the best meetings I think you've ever had. Some of you did. So tonight, I think you've got a presentation that I think you will agree will be one of our better two. This is on our value statement. And so about a year ago, I asked a group of employees to look at our culture because what I'm told over and over, when new employees come to Louisville, they may have come from a different city or a different organization, they always get here and they say, "This is the best place I've ever worked." And so what I wanted to know was what makes us so good and how do we make that sustainable over time? And so that was their challenge. But in addition to that, it's not only that this is a great place to work, you have to have some type of result from that, right? So it's a great fun place to work, but what does that mean for the citizens? And that means we provide better quality service. And so the team spent a year, and they're going to walk you through all the steps that they took, but what I think that you'll see in the end is a value statement that actually sets certain standards for performance for our organization to make sure that our employees have a great place to work, but that we also provide the best quality of service in the metroplex, maybe in Texas too. So Carolyn Booker is the person that I asked to head up this values team, and I'm going to let her kick it off, but I think you're going to hear from a lot of members of the team today.
Thank you so much. Mayor and council, thank you for having us today. So again, I am Carolyn Booker, the Director of Library Services, for those of you that don't work for the city. So we're here today with a large group of people that have volunteered and been appointed by their directors to be on this panel, have been working hard since last November. I have a short video to show you, and then we'll get into our presentation.
Build our future.
Value people.
Build our future.
Serve every day.
Serve every day.
Value people.
Serve every day.
Build our future.
Build our future.
Build our future.
Serve every day.
All right, I am.
We are stronger together.
That's our short teaser video for you. You'll hear some of those voices today. So you heard from the city manager, the charge that she started us off with in November. She did an excellent job of telling us what she needed from us, that we have a great organization that we're working with, happy employees, and how do we keep that going? How do we preserve that over time? So that was our charge, to rewrite them, work with what we have, and make sure that it keeps going over the long term. We started out in a couple of different ways of getting, working as a committee. We started with a book discussion, so we started talking about the book, Everybody Matters. And this book was also discussed by the city management team. You may have heard some people talking about it over the past year. But basically, the committee got together probably four or five times, talking about a few chapters of the book, and learning about how this other organization really pushes their values out to all employees, and how they all engage and connect with it, and how they keep it going. We also started looking at other organizations' values, how they write their values, how they push them out to their employees, what we liked about the style of those values, what we thought would work for us, and what we didn't think would work for us. So comparing things was a good starting point for us.
Our committee consists of employees from various departments throughout the city, so I'd like to invite them to stand up and introduce themselves to you. I'll start. My name is Elizabeth Mays. I'm the Senior Business Information Analyst for the ITS Department.
And one of the major people in your dashboard development.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Tamara Brooks. I'm with the Human Resources Department.
Kevin Dever, Assistant Chief with the Police Department.
Kelly Rouse, I work for the Public Services, I'm the Utility Meetings Operations Supervisor.
Markeen Cryer, 55th Paramedic, Fire Department.
Taryn Moore, Captain with the Fire Department.
Matt Martius, I'm the Public Information Coordinator, work for Public Relations.
I'm Malcolm Texer, Crew Leader of the Street Department, Co-Service.
Andy Barber, Labor Services.
Tracy O'Prey, Purchasing Agent for the Finance Department.
Lori Bowen, Recreation Manager, Parks and Recreation.
Prit Patel, Economic Development and Planning.
So that's our committee. So first, we wanted to start by showing you what our former values were. So we've got a list of nine values, and really what we found is they're a little bit difficult to remember. Some people can remember, there's three Cs, but very few employees can actually recite all nine of them. They are still very important. As an employee who's been with the city for almost 20 years, I've seen all of these in action. So what we've done is streamlined it. So this is the Louisville Way. Value, serve, build. And really, it's more than just those three words. The ideas from all of the former values are in these sentences, or they're in there somewhere. So I'll give you a second to take a look at what we've come up with.
So our first main goal was to gather input from as many people as we could throughout every department. Each one of us went to our respective departments, talked to every employee that we could possibly get our hands on, and we all asked the exact same questions. What is important to receive? What must we do right every day to deliver on our mission and vision, both now, but also in the future? What is special or unique about working here? What should we protect about the way we work together? And what is missing from working here? What happens, what we need in the future that are not present today in the way we do our jobs, and the way we work together and treat each other? We were inundated with feedback from everybody. And it took a long time for, just to gather all this information and get it compiled just to one room. On top of that, it took us two full meetings just to narrow it down. I'd like to say that with all that, something really stood out about our employees. One, they care. They truly do care about the city. They truly do care about what's going on. And two, they want to be part of a positive change. So our first step was to narrow it all down. As you can see, we had a wall full of paper, about 12 foot long, with all these ideas. So we wanted to narrow it down, keeping an emphasis on what is truly important. It came down to integrity, respect and diversity, service, pride and quality, communication, teamwork, community and a family environment, and feeling valued and engaged. That began designing the style of our value statement. And as the last bullet down there says, we had honest conversations, we had a lot of disagreement. Anytime you get that many personalities in one room, how did everybody's going to agree on the same thing? But ultimately, we finally did, and we came to a conclusion, which is what you're hearing today. So doing our homework, besides, we've sort of narrowed down these values of ours. And in doing more homework, we wanted to actually go and visit some of these other organizations that have previously been successful with their own value development. So we went to three different places. CMA, Community Management Associates, they're an HOA management company based out of Plano. Sewell, that's the luxury car dealership, if anyone has a luxury car in here. And finally, Southwest Airlines, and we'll have each, somebody talk about each one. Andy, do you want to talk about CMA?
Yeah, we went to CMA. They manage HOAs. I worked with them here in the city of Louisville, as well as other cities I've worked for. And when we went with Judith Fairs and her staff, you see their value system permeate down from her, to her staff, and to their field personnel. And that was very enlightening, especially the way they treat each other and their clients.
And then Elizabeth, did you want to talk about Sewell's?
Sure. It's very interesting going to Sewell. We met with their HR Director, Jared Romo, and he, really, the first thing you notice when you walk in is a very warm welcome. There were refreshments. He directed us, gives a little instruction about where the facilities were and what they do there. He talked about, the first thing he talked about was their hiring practices. A lot of times, they hire from college campuses because they're looking for employees with four-year degrees. They talked about their onboarding process. They have 40-plus hours of training. They're very training-focused. Talked a little bit about their golden standards, which you can see up here on the screen. There are a list of 10 items that seem pretty basic, hold the door for people, acknowledge anyone within 10 feet, don't chew gum. So employees are held to these standards. We talked a little bit about some very specific things. They have a dress code. So there's a certain color combination that you can wear depending on which dealership you work at. It was a very interesting experience. And actually, as I was leaving, I wanted to buy a Sewell, and we didn't really even talk about cars. The customer service that you get as a customer of Sewell was really obvious, even during our floor presentations.
So I was one of the poor lucky individuals to actually get to go to Southwest Airlines. They put on an event called Their Culture Connection. Essentially, it's a showcase of what makes them so special. Why are they special? And really, what it all boils down to, it ends up being their employees that are, what drive that company. You know, besides working on communication and recognition, the one thing that really set Southwest apart from, I think, the other two places that we visited was the time and effort they put into designing the facility and making it very, an un-office, office atmosphere. Here's an example. What they do is they have collaboration rooms throughout the entire facility, and it's designed to get people together and communicating and talking to each other. One of their values is have a fun-loving attitude, and that's the picture of it, put your inaction right there. Southwest was really refreshing to visit and to see. They only do two of these events a year, and I enjoyed it very. I highly recommend, if you get a chance to go, please go. I know that they have limited amounts of people that they can take in, but I think they're going to do one in September, but it was a really, really good learning experience. So we, I was supposed to cover short-term goals, but we're actually in the process of actually implementing and enrolling out with what we're, what we produce. And so we have a, the actual rollout's going to be November 2nd. We invite you to come join us. It's going to consist of a video from Donna. We've actually already met with city managers and directors, and we've had some buy-in and support from them. Where all the values and committee members are going to be at this location. It's going to be a two-session event, so one at 10:00 AM, and I think the other's at 2:00, 2:00 PM. And finally, you're going to have a video from us, and you, Matt's working on that, and you kind of already had a little taste of it earlier there, so. Following that, we're not going to sit on our hands. We're actually going to, the following week, we're going to continue to do departmental kickoff training events from the 6th to the 10th. And then we've already actually started to roll out with some posters, and we've got some strategically placed areas where there's a lot of foot traffic, to have these posters and these pop-up banners. So I'm going to hand it over to Tam.
Thank you. So this all sounds really great, right? What we're doing, it sounds amazing. But now, what are we going to do after the fact? So our communication plan is to start by relaunching our employee newsletter. One of the things that we heard from our employee survey this year was that employees wanted to know more about what's going on in the city. So how do we do that? So we thought one of the ways to address that would be to relaunch that employee newsletter, where we would put things out, allow people to, you know, share their stories, and then also advertise our events, and what all is going on, what's happening in the city of Louisville. Another great part of this, working in HR, we have the luxury of having training in our department. And so in order to, one of the questions that I always get, being the training specialist, is that, how does this pertain to my job? Why am I here? Why do I need this? And so one of the things I want to do this coming up year is to make sure that every value is implemented in each and every one of our trainings. So it all ties back to the Louisville Way, so that everything that we do, we are living, we are breathing the Louisville Way, so that everybody is on the same page. And then the next part of our communication plan, some things that we want to make sure that we do, is that we want to be very transparent with our employees here. So we want to talk about just total compensation-wise, the value that you bring to this city. You can see it in some of the metrics that we're going to roll out later this year. And then also, a really cool thing that we're doing is that we are purchasing our very first training software, where we'll be able to actually track all of our employees' training hours, and then also, we'll be able to give them on-demand. So anywhere in the city, you'll be able to log into this training software wherever you are, whether you're out in the field, or you're in an office somewhere, whether you're at home, and you need to be logged into this training, you could do it anywhere. So we want to make sure that we're offering everything to everyone, so that it won't just be us here at City Hall. Because a lot of people say that, you know, "I work in the field, I can't get out to training. How can I get that training?" So we're going to offer that to them on-demand. So this is a big part of that, and then I'm going to introduce the people.
Elizabeth. So Tamara was talking about the goals that we have over this next year or so, but what happens after that? So it's really exciting, we've got this rollout, we're going to be seeing these changes on the employee side over the next year. But in the long term, this needs to last. All the employees got together, we have input on it. This is something that is very near and dear to everyone. So this is what we're going to be continuing on with. We're going to have refresher classes, so professional certifications, you have CEUs, this is going to be along those same sorts of lines. So we're going to refresh and talk about the Louisville Way, and then we're also going to conduct town hall meetings, so employees can come and ask those questions. They may read the employee newsletter, but may not understand something. This is a great place to ask those questions. Why do we do this? I don't understand this. So everyone can feel as engaged as possible. We're going to be developing metrics so that we can track and ensure the consistency and hold people accountable for the Louisville values. You need to be living them. That's why they're values. This is what we're here for. And then we're going to promote and provide opportunities for employees to cross-train inter-departmentally. So I'll have a better idea of another department, what it is to walk in their shoes. They'll understand what it is to walk in recreation and all parts. And I think that gives us an overall better understanding of our organization. We're not there as ambassadors every single day. We need to represent fully the city. And without that whole range of knowledge, it can be difficult and a challenge to do.
So as you can imagine, that we're going to have lots of results of these employee values and the Louisville Way, but what exactly do we want to see? We really want people to know the values. We want them to understand them, to see them around them in the workplace, and to put them into work. We want them to be able to say them to us. We also want them to have a connection with the people who are on the committee, and understand how we got here, be able to ask questions and learn, what was the process? We want them to feel comfortable with how we arrived at these values. We also want them to know that, hey, this is where we are, this is what we're proposing, but this can change. This is going to be a fluid process, where down the line, we realize that, hey, we also want to do this, or we think we could, we could make it better by adding this. We want to share stories and learn and keep moving forward. We also want them to hear that management is supportive of us, that they've heard it, and they are extremely enthusiastic about this. As I said earlier, we had a meeting with the city manager and all the directors, but we're also working on meeting with upper management and mid-level management as well. So we want people to be pumped about it, we want them to be excited about it, we want them to feel respected, that this is their values, and we want them to feel that it's really not that difficult, that this is part of their work life, that this is, maybe they're already even doing everything that's up here on the list, but it's a good way of looking at it and remembering what they're working towards together. So we want them to live our values, we want to see, we want them to see how it connects with their department and what they're doing. We want them to hold themselves accountable to it, and everyone else that they're working with and interacting with in the workplace. And we want ways to get their feedback, so we want them to keep talking and really make our values come to life. So that is our presentation for you today, and we're here for you. If you have any questions?
Carolyn, why don't you go back and finish your statement? So that's going to council.
Okay.
Council, we'd like your feedback at this point.
Okay. Anybody have anything?
Let me ask you a question. Put everything that happened in this journey back in a box, put the lid back on it. Start back when you came to Louisville. What impressed you?
What impressed me? I would say that the friendliness, the welcoming atmosphere, also, I feel a relaxation amongst like upper management, mid-level management. I feel like when we do things as a city, we do them all together, and there's not like this strata of like, yes, it's, we're jeans on Fridays, but we don't do that as managers. You know, there's, I felt like it was a really, truly welcoming, not casual, but relaxed atmosphere where we all work together. Does that answer your question?
TJ?
Tons of background in this, it's good. Well, the one thing I got to say is you definitely picked the right people for the committee, by saying this tonight. I mean, I've worked in organizations that have philosophies and don't have a culture and everything, but I've only really worked in one that lived it. So the main thing is, you know, that it does, it gets taught, and it's, you know, lived, and it's talked about, and it becomes part of the language, so that's what's so important, because that's what really matters. So I think y'all are on the right track for that, so. Looks great. I like it, and I like the simplicity of not having, you know, 15 items or something like that. I think this is... I kept trying to make an acronym that wasn't working.
That was one of the options, we didn't go with the acronym.
I think it looks great.
Brad?
No, I agree. It looks, hats off to all of you guys for all the hard work that you did. It looks fantastic. I guess the one great thing about the city, everywhere I go, everybody talks about how great the staff is, and we just want you guys to know you're great as well, and continue this great work.
Bob, you have anything?
I'm always at the end, so everything spins. No, I think, I really, I liked the way it was presented, and I like the colors. I know that, just the way it's, I think it is catchy, it's catchy, and people should think of it. And I echo what Brandon said about the staff. I hear all the time how impressed people are with the staff. And I'll say it out there, but I heard it about western days, so it was, appreciate what everybody did.
Donna?
So you know, Mayor, what was really interesting is our kickoff meeting. So we talked about what we were there to do, and that was to develop this new statement that's reflective of who we are, and so we make sure that that is sustainable over time. And then we went around the room, and we shared stories. And I will tell you, there were stories in that room that brought tears to my eyes, about how much this organization is meant to different people in the organization, that they found like when they got here, they had a family. And it's not only the city family, it's the people we serve. And as long as we remember that as we go out, and sometimes our jobs aren't easy, it's code enforcement, it's arresting people, and it's all the difficult things we do every day. But when we focus and we remember why we're here, and the purpose is to serve, I think that we can do it in such a way that people know we're trying to do what's best for the community. And so I'm very, very proud of this group of employees, and for what they've done, and their dedication. But I will tell you, now we're going to roll up our sleeves and we're going to go to work, because it has to be, and Brent said it, if we have a statement that rolls out and we don't, we don't walk the talk, then it's very, very problematic. We have to live it every day, we have to make sure every manager at every level lives it every day. So we're going to make sure it's ingrained in our performance evaluation system, we're going to look at our training system, we're going to look at every aspect of the organization. So again, I applaud these people, they have spent so much valuable time looking at this, and I think what they brought forward is just a great product, and I would like to applaud them.
You gave me the opportunity to talk. I asked a question, so I didn't really say anything. Donna, I think we'll recall some, eight to 10 years ago was probably the first time you heard me say it, and then I said it many times since. I, long before I was on city council, I was up here for the arts, for gastronoming, for this and that and the other, and I would often come home and my wife would say, you know, "What'd you do today?" Because I work for myself, so it's not always the same schedule. And, you know, when I would tell her I was up at City Hall, I would often say, you know, "After Disneyland," I think that's the second happiest place on Earth. You've heard me make that comment many more times. And the observation was that, was what came at the very tail end, Carolyn, of what you said, and that was the teamwork, the fact that everybody was prepared to help everybody with anything, no matter what. And what seems so remarkable is that in an environment where, to me, it was a very lean staff, as was recently proven by a Dallas News-Journal article, that it was a very lean staff, nevertheless, in an environment where you would expect perhaps a lot of infighting, and, you know, "This is mine, you can't have it, because I don't have enough," then actually, what I saw was the total opposite. And then I'll wrap this up. I used to also tell Donna that if I could either figure out how to bottle it or write a book about it, I would do it. And unfortunately, you beat me to the book, but I'm happy that you've done that, and I'm happy that you finally bottled it and made a book out of it. So you kind of made my day.
Thank you, Councilman.
Anybody else have any follow-ups? You writing down stuff? I thought you might have some.
No, nothing.
Okay. Donna, do you have anything else?
No, sir. That's it, we're going to move forward.
Okay. You ready to move on to the agenda? Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody that needs to leave, go ahead.
You can stay if you want.
Yeah, you can, but it'll be real boring. Okay, we'll lead off with the invocation by Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Jones, followed by the pledge to the flags by Councilman Froyer, proclamations, TJ's got all three of them tonight. Then we have public hearings. With a motion to continue.
Yes, REW will continue on to October 60.
Mayor, if I can, when we are done going over the agenda, if I can take you into closed session for a consultation with attorney on a quick note on this item.
Right now?
We can wait till we're through the agenda.
Okay, okay. Item two, public hearing.
Council, I have asked, it says Richard will be available for questions. I had asked him to do a presentation upfront on this particular item. So if you would allow him to speak first, I think it's likely you will have some speakers on this item.
Where do you want him to do this?
Just right after.
After reading the caption, whatever Julie's going to do after Julie's through? Okay. Okay, item three.
And likewise, on your stormwater, there's two items related to stormwater. The number three is the establishment of the utility, and number four is the fee. State law does require those be in two separate public hearings. I had asked Keith Marvin to do a presentation on your stormwater drainage utility, and he would cover three and four just upfront.
In three?
Yes.
Okay.
And Mayor, if I could point out, on item three, state law requires a majority of the council to vote, so it would require four votes.
Okay, so what do we need to do?
Just letting you know that state law requires this to be passed by a majority of vote. So it would require four votes. Normally, you could pass them in three.
When I do it wrong, you just remind me. Okay. Item four, any questions on that? Now we're down to consent to five. Six.
Mayor, I would like to stop at this one and ask Todd White, who's our purchasing manager, to share some information with you about the construction manager at risk process that we have followed for Fire Station three and eight. And we will be following that same methodology for the multi-generational center, the MGC. And I think it's important to note, it is a distinct difference from what we've done in the past. So I wanted him to spend some time. He's also brought a third party, Chris, with him, who's an expert in this area. And I just want them to share some of the results with you, this process.
So Mayor City Council, I appreciate the opportunity here to be here and kind of go through the methodology that we use to hire a contractor for our construction projects. State law allows us actually two different ways of doing this. One is competitive sealed proposals and the other is construction manager at risk, or C-MAR as it's called. A brief historical background, not going to a lot of detail, you know what we've done in the past. We normally use competitive sealed proposals. Basically, we hire an architect to come up with a set of plans. They look at where our budget is, they take that information in there, they formulate the plans. They also issue what's called a statement of probable cost. We take that information, we put it into a request for competitive sealed proposals. We have to, by law, put categories with specific weights, cost being one of those. We send down the open market, they come back in. We have an evaluation team that sits down, they evaluate that, they do the scoring. Usually recommend the person who has the highest score. Some of the pitfalls, though, is pricing. It seems like usually the price always comes in higher than what we have as a probable cost for the architect. Architect does a great job of what they do, but they're not really cost people as far as trying to anticipate future costs down the road, inflation factors, things like that. The other downfall that we have is it's very, very hard to ascertain the quality of the bidder in this process. We go through the normal things of checking references and things like that. Checking references today, most people give you the best references they have. They're not gonna give you a bad reference and if finally somebody does have a bad reference, they won't put it in writing. And so it's kind of a frustrating position to try to come up with the quality of the bidder. The other side is that it's open to everybody. We have to, by law, send this out to every people, everybody that's out there that has an interest in bidding. So throughout time, we've definitely seen our fair share of the good, the bad and the ugly come in and actually try to participate in this process. Wouldn't it be great, though, if we could narrow it down to only those qualified bidders that we know are good bidders and not have it open to everybody else? This construction manager at risk is a two-step process which allows just that. The first part is I can actually issue a request for qualifications. This is the first time I've ever been able to do this using this particular type of method. Basically, it's a questionnaire that goes out with points, goes out to everybody again, but we have specific information that we really want to see the quality of the person, the quality of the work. We want to see the qualifications of the team, the actual team that we're gonna be working with. We want to see bios, we want to see resumes of the project managers, the superintendent, the construction manager out there. We want to see their qualifications, we want to see the experience of the company, we want to see how long these people have been working for that company and not just picked up recently. We want to see the subcontractor relationships that that company has. Subcontractor relationships are so important because that's the backbone of really what we're doing here, is the subcontractor relationships. Want to see if there's pending claims, litigation against it, bankruptcies, we want to know your safety record, all those types of things. The second part, the two-part process here is request proposals and an interview. It's interesting to think about this, we're asking for a price, but not the price to build the building. We want to know the price that you will charge us to be a general contractor. So there's really a two-part here. One is a pre-construction services that we're gonna get into in a minute, Chris will. But the other part is what are you gonna charge me to be my general contractor? You may have a cost for bonds, we have a cost for insurance, there's overhead, there's profit, there's margins, there's overhead in the office, there's overhead in the field, there's expenses in the field, things such as temporary office space, dumpsters, temporary fencing around the project site, portable toilets, all those types of things are a cost that you're gonna charge me to be a general contractor. All those costs then are looked at and then added in in the matrix part here that we look at with points allotted for it.
So the competitive sealed proposal process is the one that's the most traditional and that's what it really has going for it is that most stakeholders, yourselves and the taxpayers really understand, you know, when you open competitive sealed proposals, everyone understands that process. The construction manager at risk process that we use has a lot of other advantages. During the design process, because the contractor comes on early, they have a lot of input or good ideas from their firm that they share with the design team. And I'll show you some examples of those a little later, that generate better value. The cost responsibility is shared between the general contractor and the rest of the team and they have cost estimators that are much stronger than what architects typically use historic data. And contractors have a much, much better input on the cost responsibility. Subcontractors are extremely busy these days and so letting the subcontractors know a couple months or even longer in advance that this project is coming up for bid gets better participation. And when you're de-scoping the subcontractors, you have enough time to evaluate the proposals. Todd will touch on that here in a little bit. The other thing is that all the subcontractor bids that come into the contractor's office, we get to see them all. So there's great transparency on the general contractor's office. Todd was actually, and one of our team members, PPV's team members, was in the contractor's office when the bids were received and we walked out the door with a jump drive, each of us, that had every single bid categorized by category that we could take back to our office and look at. And the, one of the other major benefits is that it's not as adversarial a process. If you bid out a project using the competitive sealed proposal method, there is no real team approach. The architect doesn't know who's gonna be selected and they're kind of thrown into construction together and they, many times, are the low bidder that is missing some scope and they fight tooth and nail through Altec Construction Project to win that money back. And in the competitive sealed proposal process, you also have a great deal more lawsuits, which is also part of that adversarial process. Construction manager at risk, we have built a team environment where we are transparent in our, in our working together and when we start in construction, we all know exactly what the scope is. We've been talking about it for six months.
Chris, you've talked, you spoke to the council before, but would you give them a little background as to your career?
Sure. My, my background is as a cost estimator, working in a general contractor's office for many years. And then for the last 30 years, I've been working for owners as a consultant to help them get best value through the procurement process. And as part of that, we're doing, I don't know, probably $380 million worth of work in the Dallas area right now. And so we see this process used in multiple general contractors offices and represent owners in that process.
Okay, so like Chris was saying, the transparency of subcontractor's bids, we've never had that before under competitive sealed proposal process. We don't know if somebody comes in with a low price, if they forgot something, if they left something out. We don't have any way to find out what the subcontractor bids are. This is extremely transparent. Like I said, we were there to make sure that the process went well. By law, they actually, excuse me, the C-MAR actually has to put an ad in the paper, just like I do. There's a deadline for those subcontractor bids to come in. We're there to make sure that the integrity of that process was correct, it wasn't jeopardized or anything. So we know only those bids that came in can be considered. The biggest advantage of is that many times under competitive sealed proposal, people are in my office waiting the last two minutes before bids due. They're on the phone getting that very last price, they're trying to put that into their matrix and sign it and send it to us. And sometimes mistakes are made. The nice thing about this is that the C-MAR gets the bids in, but he has plenty of time to go through there and qualify them. If low bid looks suspicious, he can call them, get all the verification he needs. If it doesn't look like low bid would work, he has to justify it and he can go to the next low bid. So we're also part of that whole process. We see those bids, we get to see them. I think in the, in the deal with the Fire Station, we had over, I think we had 38 different categories of subcontractor bids, everything from electrical to cement, to masonry, to lighting, everything like that. And we see all those bids and there's plenty of time to vet those people out. So we know we're getting the best prices on the market. The other part of this is that if we do see something, or if the C-MAR sees something that looks out of place, whether there was a lack of competition or the prices looked too high based on the cost estimate that Chris put together and the C-MAR put together and the architect put together, then we can actually have them cancel those bids, those particular bid packages, re-advertise, you know, and up again. And that's exactly what we did on the Fire Station, one of them.
So some examples of that, during the pre-construction process, we had all kinds of alternatives that we priced out and these ideas had decision dates and we're using this same process right now on the multi-generational rec center. We're at this stage, but we kept a running log of ideas and ways to design the building a little differently and deliver a better value. And these were ideas from, from peak program value as well as from the contractor that we all agreed on and then prioritized. And I think that the most important thing, can I go back one? Just to get backspace or down here. So this is the budget on the 30th of August. We had some packages that we all agreed needed to be rebid. Our firm encouraged the contractor to pick those certain areas and we worked together to get this number, which is where we would have been if it had been a competitive sealed proposal at $10,172. That's the number in the first pass of bidding that would have been handed in as competitive sealed proposal, or what they call a hard bid, against an estimated value of $9,551 from the drawings before. So we were over budget by about $620,000 because of just the way the bids landed. So we picked some bids, some areas to rebid. When we rebid the work, we actually came in $55,000 under. So this was a $676,000 swing from what we would have done on competitive sealed proposal. You would have paid the $10 million whatever. And because the contractor took the risk in that lobby with everybody on the phone, writing down the numbers as fast as they could and no chance to rebid, the city would have signed the contractor up at $10 million whatever, the contractor would have then gone out and bought that, what they call buying it out. And they would have been able to keep this money. That would have been their win for taking the risk on bid day. So this is proof that that value exists. And that $676,000 is a textbook case of why the C-MAR process is better. So before I go into the contingency period, any questions on the C-MAR process? Okay. So a lot of questions happen around contingency. How is contingency used? This is the, this is the subcontractor's costs and the C-MAR's verifiable costs. There is a 1% contingency that the C-MAR has in their guaranteed maximum price. And then the C-MAR's fee, which was, so these are all obtained in a competitive environment, these are obtained in a competitive environment. And then we have some owner's contingency that's inside the GMP. So the guaranteed maximum price that you're being presented today is a $10,036,999. This is the $9,559 number that we, that is the actual contract amount before contingency. So with that, I'll turn it over to-
So to sum it up briefly, we have a better chance to actually qualify this contractor and get a quality contractor in place much easier than we do with competitive sealed proposals. We go through the qualifications, shortlist it, have them participate in step two. Much better way of estimating costs and evaluating options during the design. The fact that we actually have this pre-construction services where the C-MAR comes in early and works with the architect to flesh out those plans. As they're working, putting the plans together and they're bringing constructive building programs and better values to the process here, they're also constantly looking at the cost of what it's gonna be. The third leg on the stool is really Chris's team for coming in and doing that as an expert from a cost standpoint, too. The biggest thing is here, we don't have to come back for more money because we already know what it's gonna cost us upfront. And then, of course, validation of true cause of a subcontractor transparency, we've never had that before. We don't know what a subcontractor's costs are for any of these packages. But this one, we can actually look at them and have the ability to rebid them if they don't look like they're right. Just a real fast thing on Burns who we recommended tonight, a stellar company, fantastic background, fantastic reputation, been in business for 94 years, have been a true partner in this whole process, extremely professional, extremely good, and that helped us so much, we've already saved over $600,000. Any questions?
So Council, you'll remember that your direction after the Jefferson Plaza was constructed was that we need to, we need to reevaluate our system and our processes and that's what we did. And so we did switch to the C-MAR process. And I just wanted you to understand the difference that the staff has made in on hoping to bring these projects in on time and within budget.
Anybody have any questions before we continue? We'll go back to walking through the agenda. Item seven. Item eight, regular hearings. Item nine. Item 10. Item 11. And the deputy vice president. Do we have closed session tonight?
We do.
And you want to be closed session now?
Uh, well, separate and apart, I just want to talk, I have an issue, a legal issue, I don't know what I'm on, and I wanted to talk to you.
Close this and we'll go into closed session. Seven o'clock, I'll call tonight's regular session of the City Council order. First item of business is the invocation given by Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Jones, followed by the pledge to the American and Texas flag by Councilman Troyer. Please rise for a moment of silent contemplation. Thank you.
Please join me in the pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
The next, I have proclamations.
Mr. Hicks?
Come on, we can do selfie here. So we have a couple of proclamations and I'm proud to be giving a couple of these to my friend here, Mr. Hicks. Come over here and join me here? Come over here and join me here?
Yes, sir.
And I don't normally speak in whereas's, but I do for proclamations, so if you'll bear with me for a moment?
Yes, sir.
Whereas bullying is physical, verbal, sexual, or emotional harm, or intimidation intentionally directed at a person or group of people, and whereas bullying occurs in neighborhoods, playgrounds, schools, and throughout technology such as the internet and cell phones, and whereas various researchers have concluded that bullying is the most common form of violence affecting millions of American children and adolescents annually, and whereas targets of bullying are more likely to acquire physical, emotional, and learning problems, and students who are repeatedly bullied often fear such activities as riding the bus, going to school, and attending community activities, and whereas children who witness bullying often feel less secure, more fearful, and intimidated. Now, therefore, I, T.J. Gilmore, Councilman of the City of Lewisville, Texas, and on behalf of the Lewisville City Council, do hereby proclaim Friday, October sixth, 2017, as Say No to Bullying Day. Got to do the no.
No.
There we go. Be it further resolved that Stop Bullying, our purpose encourages Lewisville schools and students, parents, recreation programs, religious institutions, and community organizations to engage in a variety of awareness and prevention activities designed to make our communities safer for all children and adolescents. Proclaim this the second day of October, 2017.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and I'd like you to say-
First off, I want to thank you all so much for always supporting me and being a true partner. I can't say crime because there's police behind me, so always being a true partner. Mayor, I'm so glad that you are up and well. Last year you was under the weather, but hey, you're like a trooper, you're always here. Thank you for your support, you mean the most. It means, it means a lot when I'm able to go across the country and I speak to almost two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand kids a year. And, but when I speak to councilmen from other cities and I'm able to say that my mayor backs what I'm doing, it always looks great, and I always say that the Council of Lewisville, they truly back me. So I'm blessed, I really am, and I thank you all for what you're doing, and I will continue my fight to stop bullying, and we're going to start in Lewisville and then the rest of Texas, and look out, America, because we're coming. Thank you, sir.
What's your next event?
Oh, my, my event is this Saturday. It is going to be at Huffines Middle from eight-thirty to two. It is free, yes, and we will have a lot of good activities. We actually have some NFL players that are coming to speak, we have some professional bodybuilders that are coming to speak, I will speak. There will be a lot of games, activities. We get the message out first, and then we let the kids have fun. So it is this Saturday, Huffines Middle, fourteen forty Valley, and again, it's free. But to the City of Lewisville, I am forever grateful for your love and support. Thank you.
Thanks for taking care of me. All right, and I have, I think it looks like the entire library board and library So I have to tell a quick story as they're coming up. Jennifer and I are, both are band parents, and she posted on her Facebook page the other day Neil Geiman's newest book, which is Norse Mythology, and I had just checked that book out of our library, so I felt a little kindred there. Have you read it yet? I'm about halfway through, it's, it's really good.
I have about twenty books. I, I hoard books, so.
All right, so this proclamation, whereas Texas libraries serve the people of Texas and help support the incredible innovation and creativity that is a natural Texas asset to the people of our state, and whereas Texas school, public, and universities libraries serve millions of Texans and promote learning, business and entrepreneurship, innovation, workforce development, and much more, and whereas the Lewisville community and patrons of the Lewisville Public Library have the potential to transform lives, and whereas libraries are places where the creation and cultivation of ideas happen and people are encouraged to make big dreams a reality, and whereas libraries are a resource for economic vitality and education in today's ever-changing, fast-paced, digital environment, and whereas the Lewisville Public Library serves thousands of users through innovative programs and essential services such as bilingual Storytimes, ESL and GED classes, STEM kits, and circulating mobile hotspots, and whereas the Lewisville Public Library seeks to connect people and cultivate learning through the development of a Makerspace and Digital Media Lab in 2018, and whereas the City of Lewisville supports wholeheartedly the goals of education and opportunity, and now, therefore, I, T.J. Gilmore, Councilman of the City of Lewisville, Texas, and on behalf of the Lewisville City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of October one through seven, 2017, as Power Up at Your Library Week, and encourages all of the citizens of the City of Lewisville to visit the library and participate by exploring a personal area of curiosity and innovation. Proclaim this second day of October, 2017. Who's taking this mic from me? Come on. Thank you, Carolyn.
Okay, I don't know that I could say anything better than that proclamation, but I do invite you to follow the library on social media. This week we will be spotlighting all of those wonderful things that we do on Instagram, Twitter, and on Facebook, so I invite you to join us as well as to come into the library and learn how we can serve you.
Let's give them a hand. In case you haven't noticed, I'm kind of a fan. Mr. Lutke? Where'd you go? Where'd you go? There you are. At least I hear you're, you're on deck for this one.
Yes, sir.
All right. Whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places. I think they got them all. And whereas community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live, and whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community, and whereas the full benefits of planning require public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation, and whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories, and whereas American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners, endorse National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions sound planning and plan implementation made to the quality of our settlement and environments, and whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of planning commissions and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the City of Lewisville, Texas, and whereas we recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional community and regional planners of the City of Lewisville, Texas, and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Now, therefore, I, T.J. Gilmore, Councilman of the City of Lewisville, Texas, and on behalf of the Lewisville City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of October, 2017, as Community Planning Month in the City of Lewisville, Texas, in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month. Proclaim this second day of October, 2017. Can you say a few words?
On behalf of the planning staff, I'd like to thank the Council and all of the various boards and commissions for all of their support for all of the city's planning efforts. The City of Lewisville literally knocked it out of the park when they adopted, well, when you adopted the Lewisville 2025 Plan. It is the most innovative, creative, and visionary plan I have ever seen in my twenty-four years as a professional planner, and we're very proud to work for a community that values planning. We also are very proud to serve a community that so aggressively implements that plan through our budget, through all of our projects. Everything that we do revolves around the nine big moves of the 2025 Plan. And again, we're, we're so proud to be associated with the city and are proud of all of our planning efforts, and we know that these planning efforts will definitely improve Lewisville in the long term. Thank you.
Next item is public hearings.
Public hearing number one, consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change request and an ordinance granting a special use permit and four variances on six-point-six-eight acres founded by East Valley Ridge Boulevard on the northeast side and Meyer Court on the west side. Staff is requesting that the City Council continue this public hearing to the October sixteenth, 2017 City Council meeting. The recommendation is that the City Council continue the public hearing.
I move to continue the public hearing until October sixteenth.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and then a second. No comment on that, okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Public hearing number two, consideration of a zone change request from single-family residential district on a state townhome district on a four-point-two-zero-four acre tract of land located on the north side of Highland Drive approximately four-hundred-ninety-five feet east of Denton Tap Road. The applicant plans to build a development with thirty-two single-family detached homes. P&amp;Z recommended approval by a vote of four to zero. The recommendation is that this, I'm sorry, four to one. The recommendation is that the City Council approve the proposed ordinance as set forth in the caption. Mayor, we have two presentations, and I have many speaker cards on this item. Our first presentation is by Richard Lutke, our planning director.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Durham and members of the council. Next slide, please. I want to start off with our zoning map, just to kind of give you an overview and a feel for the, for the development patterns and the zoning patterns in the area. As you can see in the image, the site is hatched in the, in black and white near the center-left of the image. The red portion is the existing Vista Ridge United Methodist Church. There's a variety of yellow colors, those colors represent various residential districts. Near the middle of the image, you'll see a lighter yellow, that is the R-seven-five district, which requires minimum seventy-five-hundred square foot lots. Then as you move westward along Highland Drive, you'll notice that the area is zoned R-six, minimum six-thousand square, square foot lots. Continuing westward, you have R-five zoning, minimum five-thousand square foot lots. The proposed zoning of a state townhome district, or ETH, is essentially an R-four zoning, since it requires minimum four-thousand square foot lots. And then, again, that would be immediately adjacent to the general business zoning that, that the church, the church site currently has. So you see a very, very strong transition of zoning and density as you move closer to the, the intersection and the commercial uses at that intersection. Next slide, please. This next slide is just an aerial photograph, and it does show that we do have a variety of land uses and densities in this area. There's multifamily to the north of the site, there's townhomes to the south, there's actually southwest of the site is the United Grocery Store within the city of Capel. So it's very diverse land uses in this area, but the, I wanted to reinforce that the, the single-family zoning and land uses on the north side of Highland Drive kind of do follow a very strict pattern of gradual increase of density. The next slide shows a table that compares the existing zoning to the proposed, and as you can see, the R-five has a little bit larger lot size, lot width, and setbacks compared to the ETH, or in other words, R-four, but one of the more distinguished characteristics about the differences between the two districts is the minimum dwelling unit size. The R-five has a minimum dwelling unit size of fourteen-fifty square feet, whereas the ETH has a two-thousand square foot minimum, so much larger homes will be built in that zoning category. Also want to note, too, that typically infill developments such as this typically submit an application for a planned development. Unfortunately, this site was not eligible for our planned development process because it is under the minimum five-acre requirement. I believe it's a little over four acres. So that is why they're, they're going through, requesting a straight zoning designation with an accompanying preliminary plat, and that preliminary plat is what's locking in the single-family detached option. Next slide, please. And again, this is a, an image of the preliminary plat, it is, it is a little faint, but it does show that the, the density is somewhat increased. I believe the number of lots adjoining that eastern property line are eighteen lots. I do want to note that this is a front-entry product that is proposed for this development. So there will be no garage access from the alley that is serving the neighborhood to the east, which is zoned R-five. Next slide, please. There are three variances associated with the preliminary plat. I will go ahead and cover those at this time since it is pertinent to the zoning change. The first request is to request the front-entry product in lieu of alley access. Number two is to decrease the right-of-way of the street from fifty feet to forty feet. This is a typical request in tight infill developments such as this, and essentially the developer's putting the street into the forty feet of right-of-way, but they're also providing ten feet of easement on either side, and that easement will be a sidewalk and utility easement. So essentially, you'll have a sixty-foot right-of-way, which is ten feet larger than what we normally require, and that will allow additional room for all the public infrastructure and franchise utilities that'll have to fit inside that right-of-way. The third and final variance is illustrated in, in blue on the illustration, and that is to request a tubular steel fence with live screening in lieu of a masonry screening wall, and that is a, a variance request that is supported by the church, and there's a letter in your packet supporting that. In closing, staff thoroughly evaluated this proposal and determined, number one, that the proposal is, is an appropriate fit as an infill development at this location, number two, that the proposal does not negatively impact surrounding development, number three, that the proposal provides a good transition between the R-five neighborhood to the east and the general business zoning to the west at the intersection, and number four, that the, that the proposal complies with the Lewisville 2025 Vision Plan, and in particular, the big move number five, new neighborhood choices. At this time, I'm glad to answer any questions.
Any questions?
If not, the applicant has a presentation that will provide a little bit more detail about the proposal. Thank you.
If we can get your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Adam Buczek. I'm with Scorebird Company, I'm a development partner, and I'm with Noah Flaviano, my Vice President of Development, with Scorebird. Our address is at eighty-two fourteen West Chester Drive, Suite seven-ten, Dallas, seven-five-two-two-five.
Okay, continue.
Thank you. We have a slight, a short presentation that we'll flip through here. I couldn't say it any better than, than Richard just eloquented. I would like to, before showing, going into the presentation, just spend a few minutes just explaining the backdrop of how we came to be where we are today with this process, because the really only thing I can really add to what Richard just said, in addition to being recommended, you know, we're thrilled to have this opportunity with P&amp;Z's recommendation of approval and staff's support, but that we, this great state of Texas provides the zoning, a zoning process and appropriate steps, and one of those elements that was critical, critical to this process, and the only reason we have this opportunity is because of the input from our residents and our neighbors. And I wanted everybody to know on council that we sincerely took to heart all of the input from all four sides of this property and worked diligently. We contracted for this property about a year ago today, and within a month of getting under contract with the property, we reached out to the immediate homeowners on the Ridgedale Drive and had our first HOA meeting with just those folks. When we initially contracted for the property, we were anticipating doing a terraces by Windsor, which is our building company affiliate, to do a high-end townhome product, very, very similar to the one that was very successful on the north side of the church property. When we were, we were looking at this, do the same thing, and say, hey, that was a big success. Well, when we had that first homeowner meeting with the folks on Ridgedale, we learned the backdrop that back in 2013, that was proposed, that was actually brought before the P&amp;Z and was denied a four-to-three vote, I believe, and when we got the input from the residents, they were adamantly against wanting to have a townhome development right up against them. So, taking that seriously to heart, we, this was back in November of sixteen, we went back to the drawing board and said, how can we come up with a single-family detached product that will have the long enduring quality that Scorebird Company is known for? We're a local privately-held company out of Dallas, and all we do is Dallas-Fort Worth. We've been in over twenty-five municipalities, and our name, when it's on it, it's for quality and long-lasting quality at that, and Windsor Homes is our building company, and if approved tonight, that's who would be our builder. And so we hope to have that, that favor. So we had the first meeting. It took us five months working diligently with your professional staff from November up till May to be able to come back and have a second meeting with our homeowners, and that, over the course of that, we found in our due diligence and, and doing product design for especially product, as you're going to see here tonight, for Highland Terraces, is a virtue or testament to the input from the residents, substantial sacrifice by my landowner, the Vista Ridge Church, collaboration with the Byzantine Apartments, or Valentin's, apartments to the north, who gave us an easement to help solve a drainage issue that's- who gave us an easement to help solve a drainage issue that's quarter million dollars. Uh, there's a pipe that drains out to the, on the site and uh, on a four-acre, four-point-two-acre site, it's about fifty thousand acres. So there's extreme hardship on this property that exists today. But with staff's uh, input and leadership, uh, their solution-oriented approach, uh, collaboration with the northern, the property of the north, uh, and the church making a tremendous sacrifice, a sizable six-figure help to, we went from a forty-four townhome unit in November, a proposal from forty-four townhomes in November of sixteen to what we have today, which is thirty-two detached, single-family homes under the Estate Townhome District. So substantial uh, collaboration. We had the second meeting uh, with the Ridge, Ridge Dale homeowners and um, additional, it was much better received uh, than the first, than the townhome product, although still concerned. Residents, uh, some residents, and you'll hear them tonight, uh, did not want anything, that wasn't good enough. But I wanted you to know that we went through that process, took five months before the second meeting and went from forty-four units to thirty-two and handled the drainage and followed staff's leadership guidance through this process, which is the way it should be. Uh, over the second, between the second and the third HOA meeting, I just want to be on the record. There's a couple of requests that the, the, the adjacent homeowners to the east asked us. And we were, we're, we're not just willing, we're happy to do. And that's provide an eight-foot tall board-on-board cedar wood fence with steel posts on that whole eastern edge and uh, provide it, plant a tree in the backyard of every home uh, for longevity and privacy. And uh, I wanted just to be on the record, we stated that at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and I'm saying it again. Um, so after we had three meetings, those first three was just with the Ridgedale um, uh, residents. We had a, what's it, Ridge, Ridge Dale, yeah. Uh, we had a fourth meeting. Um, and that was in, was that, uh, I'm losing track. It was in, in June of this, this last summer. And uh, we were kindly enough to be invited or be off, uh, invited to have a, a Vista Ridge Estates HOA-wide meeting to let everybody know in the entire community, not just those immediately affected on the east. And um, uh, what we heard at P&amp;Z was that essentially a preponderance of the folks on Ridgedale were against our proposed development, but as a whole, a preponderance of the feedback that we were receiving uh, from community-wide was in favor. And so we were pleased to hear that uh, over the course of that fourth uh, meeting. So before we even had our first public hearing on this proposal, we had four meetings with the homeowners. And I wanted you to know that because that counts in our book. And we wouldn't be here today without their input. Again, this would have been a, you know, we would have provided a townhome input proposal to you and, but I think this is a great solution for the tough property. Uh, and I wouldn't be here today, uh, we wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for my, my property owner, uh, Vista Ridge United Methodist Church, because they have been a tremendous uh, help. And of course, the property owner to the north, who, uh, without the easement that they agreed to help us solve the drainage, we wouldn't be here. So these infill sites take a team, takes a team, the staff, of course, being very solution-oriented. So with that, I'll let Noah do a quick presentation for you.
Thanks for having me. I just want to go through these real quick. It's just really a property overview. Richard did a great job, but um.
If you could go ahead and give your name and address for the record, just to make sure.
I'm Noah Flaviano with the Scorebird Company, eighty-two fourteen West Chester, Suite seven-ten, Dallas, Texas, seven-five-two-two-five.
Thank you.
Who, uh, okay. Same name, okay. Um, so first, I'm going to give you a little bit of background of our uh, company. Uh, Adam kind of touched on it. Then I'm just going over the property, where it is, and uh, what we're requesting tonight. Um, I'm going to show you some pictures of the product that we're very proud of. Windsor Homes, as Adam said, will be the builder if approved tonight. And uh, they're very excited about it, and so are we. Um, I'll show you the development standards, what Richard touched on. I'll just go quickly through those, so uh, just a refresher. And then I'll show you our projected price points, uh, given the market as it is today. And then uh, I'll just touch on the, the meetings we had, just the, just a little quick little timeline for you, so you have that as well. So first, our history. Um, we're a locally privately-held company. We've been in business around thirty-five years. Uh, as Adam said, uh, we're twenty-five municipalities around the DFW-only area. Um, right now, probably under construction, whether it's a new phase or a new, new development, we have about twenty, twenty projects going right now in construction or under contract right now, uh, going through the zoning process. So we're, we're very active and uh, we're really trying to grow our home-building company, which is Windsor Homes. Or on the townhome side, it's uh, terraced by Windsor. Um, so we've built uh, and we've built big master plans in eight-hundred acres over in Rockwall and up in Anna. And then we've built four-acre tracks just as this, uh, in Allen and in Murphy and places like that. Uh, so one representative product or example is at, in Allen, is the Cambridge at Water Crossing. Uh, it's six acres, thirty-three patio homes, very similar to this, although the product's different, it's a different time. Product's a little bit different, uh, but it's kind of the same layout and concept as we're doing. Uh, Cambridge Homes was our builder and those are priced in the four-hundred thousands, uh, and the lots were about five thousand square foot. Uh, our next one is actually uh, over in Carrollton. It's a townhome project, uh, both front and rear entry. Uh, Megatell Homes is our builder there. Uh, again, this is six, six-and-a-half acres, another small project, uh, just forty-six lots. Uh, and those are priced from the low threes to mid-threes, and they're selling very well. We're very happy with it. Um, another one is actually just a phase within our Stone Creek. Uh, it's a four-hundred-acre master plan in Rockwall over off John King, or two-oh-five and John King. Uh, this is just ten acres, fifty-two lots. As you can see, it's just a road, has a nice winding feature. Uh, Windsor Homes and Megateller and those, and those are priced from the low three-hundreds to high three-hundreds on a fifty-by-one-twenty. So we've done this before. We do small deals, we do big deals, we break our deals into phases. So we're very experienced and we, we've done this before and we're happy that Windsor's going to be a builder in this project. Uh, so going over just the property, uh, as you can see, and Richard touched on this, uh, a whole lot better than me. Uh, you have Vista Ridge Estates to the east, the Valentine Apartments that we worked with the drainage on, they're sheet-flowing about, uh, I, I won't go and CFS, but two twenty-seven-inch headwalls are coming onto the property at the top and kind of causing a big issue in the area. Um, you have the Preserve Vista Ridge on the west side and uh, the Vista Ridge United Methodist Church on the west side as well. So it's a perfect transition, and I'll touch on that here in a sec. Um, and that's just our layout. As you can see, you got the, you have the R seven, R six, R five, and as Richard said, the R four, which would be, be going to the higher intensity church and townhomes to the west. It's a perfect transition. So as we said, thirty-two detached homes. Um, the typical lot size, uh, obviously varies depending where you are, is the thirty-six-and-a-half by a hundred-and-ten feet. Um, and this is the Estate Townhome zoning, or R four, as Richard said. Um, it's high-quality and high-price point homes, and I'll touch on those later. And it's a four-point-two acres. And that's why we're here with just three small variances and going straight zoning. Um, so as, as he mentioned, it's a, you're going from the single-family to the higher intensity, actually, north to the high-intensity uh, multifamily, and then the townhomes, and then the retail on the south and the church. Um, it'll help surrounding property values, and we're, we're pretty certain on that one, judging from the size of the homes and the price of the homes and the price per square foot are, are very high. And we're excited for that, and we're happy that we're going to be building to that price point. Helps us. Um, so at this point, we think it's the highest and best use for this property, is the four-point-two infill uh, property. So here, we can uh, we can kind of just go through these. These are just different pictures of the type of product. Uh, as you can see, the front entry, uh, nice aesthetics, mostly masonry. Um, you have the, you have some garages with uh, cedar. It just depends on where you are. Uh, you can have stone accents and articulation is really something that we've uh, we've been pushing with Windsor Homes, uh, with the townhomes and with these, this new product. You can see the articulation. It's not just a, a blank wall. Um, you have the garage, but you also have protruding roof lines in different pitches. And there's uh, some from the rear. That's only a six-foot fence. And as you said, on the east, we're going to build an eight-foot fence uh, and have a tree on every single lot. So you can see the, the give and take of the, of the building. It's not just a box. Um, it's, there are some. And then with the front entry, we're, uh, one thing that we have learned is that you actually have a backyard, uh, both with their townhome product and this. We like the front entry and the consumer likes the front entry for that backyard. You have your private backyard. Um, so going over the development standards, uh, minimum lot area is four thousand. That's what uh, Estate Townhome is. Our minimum lot width is exceeding by sixteen-and-a-half feet. It's just for the product that we're building right now. Um, the front setback's twenty, just in line. And then our rear setback, uh, we're committing to ten feet, even though zero is um, required. We like that ten-foot backyard. I know ten-foot doesn't sound like much, but it really does do a difference when you're trying to sell a home. Uh, and then the side yard setback is three feet, so we can have windows on both sides. I worked with uh, Timmy Polito with the fire department, uh, a lot over this process, making sure that we have the same, uh, the right setbacks and things like that. Um, next, the, the minimum dwelling unit, uh, as Richard touched on, is two thousand square foot. We're ranging these from two thousand, maybe a little bit above three thousand as a range. Um, the lot coverage, we're about sixty percent, so there is more grass. It's not just building out. We obviously want a backyard and plans change as we're building these and things like that. Um, and then the maximum building height is two-and-a-half stories. It's, they're really two-story homes. Um, we don't have any product right now, uh, that have a third story, even half-story. Um, so here's just a, a simple uh, top view of kind of what we're planning on with just setbacks. Obviously, they can, uh, well, the front can't really change, but the, the rear could change depending on the product. We might have a covered patio and have to move it in, uh, but there's the three-foot side setbacks. Um, projected price points, as I mentioned earlier, uh, we're, we're planning on starting at two thousand square foot. Obviously, it's not going to be two thousand on the dot. It's going to, it's going to range a little bit. Um, but from two thousand to twenty-eight hundred square foot with twenty-four in the middle, it's just as a midpoint. Uh, we're really projecting mid-threes to high-threes, three-hundred-forty thousand starting off in that area, um, going all the way up to three-hundred-and-eighty. And as you can see, our projected price per square foot is a hundred-and-seventy, uh, and the, the lowest that we're really projecting for price per square foot is above a hundred-and-thirty-five dollars a square foot. Um, so as Adam touched on in more detail, we had four meetings before we even went to P&amp;Z. Um, we've worked with the neighbors. We've reached out to the neighbors. I, to invite these uh, adjacent homeowners, I personally went and uh, stuck flyers on their door and mailed them. We, we tried to interact with them and we did. And as Adam mentioned, after the first meeting, we had forty-four townhomes. So we're, we're building these townhomes in Murphy and Allen and McKinney, and we're very proud of them. They're selling very well. But it, we wouldn't have been where we are right now without these neighbors. So we uh, made concessions along with the church and came up with a thirty-two-unit uh, detached product uh, concept. So as I said, forty-four townhomes to thirty-two detached, single-family over a, almost a year of working on this with the staff and the homeowner in the uh, Apartments to the North. And then we're proposing the eight-foot uh, privacy fence on the east side. And then we're planting at least one tree, uh, which is above what's required. And that's uh, all I have. I, I hope it didn't take too long, but if we would have the opportunity to come back up after uh, as a rebuttal, I'd appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I'm here for any questions. So, so is Adam.
Anybody having questions at this time?
Thanks.
Mayor and council, I'm going to read the cards off, um, for people who've submitted a position but don't wish to speak first. I apologize if I mispronounced anyone's name. Mark, in support, we have Mark Packer, Kevin Matthew Devine Jr., John Perkins, Claude Gilliam, Catherine Gilliam, Lori Conkey, David Fortune, Johnny Swaim, Della Swaim, Cindy Elrod, Vera Jo Bell, Nancy J Kenyon, Robert T Kenyon, Stefan Gosling, William Burden Jr., Wanda Switchenberg, Fred Switchenberg, Franklin Richards, Scott King, Janine Sweetin, David Glee, Judy Glee, Robin White, Wright, Sidney, Cindy Burna, Bobby Collier, Cassandra Williams, Glenn Elrod. Um, I apologize. I am going to mispronounce his name. It's Nebio Belane, Carolyn Dennison, Norman Schmidick, Jim White, Tammy Barber. The following cards are in opposition, Ms. Shell Williams and Robin Fry. Mayor, would you like me to call the first speaker up?
Yes.
Just a reminder, you have five minutes. And if you'll please state your name and your address before you start, Ray Hackman.
Sorry, your speaker's starting with.
Ray Hackman, you have five minutes. Please state your name and your address before you start speaking.
My name is Ray Hackman. I live at twenty-eight seventy Ridgedale Drive. Uh, thank you so much for being here tonight. I appreciate your service to the community. Um, I was actually a little surprised. I thought that the normal protocol was to have all those speaking for the zoning went first and that those opposed went last.
This is the way we have it tonight, sir.
Sorry, pardon me?
This is how we have it.
Okay. Um, well, let me begin by mentioning this. Uh, I actually wrote uh, my comments to the zoning change request probably ten or fifteen different times, and I couldn't actually get it quite down the way I wanted to. There were numerous points and comments made by the developer that um, is really just misinformation. Uh, I'll say this. I mean, if you listen to him speak, there was, he would indicate that there's, there's been this wonderful kumbaya relationship between him and the residents. Um, this development really only affects the people on Ridgedale Drive. Um, I saw that there's just a lot of different people here that are speaking for it. Most of them probably go to the church. Uh, none of them live on Ridgedale Drive. And also, the developer uh, has some nice comments about who they are and where they build. And that's all good, too. And I'm sure they make good projects. However, um, the projects in this particular location, uh, in our estimation are not appropriate. Uh, from the first, very first time I contacted the planning and zoning department, um, it just, something seemed kind of funny about the deal because it almost seemed like they were trying to shoehorn in this little project in, to the property. Uh, they talked about the drainage issues, um, being, uh, creating such a problem that they couldn't really build R-five-zoned lots on the property. Uh, these developers, by their own admission, are townhouse builders and developers. They don't build single-family houses. And there never has really been any real attempt to try and develop it into R-five, which is what it's zoned for. Um, yes, there were some attempts to, and we did meet with the developer, but I can tell you unequivocally that uh, in no way, shape or form have we ever supported a townhouse development, whether it was attached or detached. Uh, when they came back with this revised plan, with this ETH, uh, it's nothing more than a six-foot sliver of space between a whole row of townhomes going up and down the street. And I would just like to ask you all this. I mean, there is about thirty-five to forty feet of distance between the alley and the backs of our houses. Which by the way, even though the minimum zoning requirement is fourteen-hundred, fourteen-hundred-and-fifty square feet, most of the homes are seventeen-hundred to two thousand plus, depending on where their single back story. These townhomes are going to be like ten feet from the property line, which is like three times closer to the backs of our houses. And so um, if they were to be successful in getting this, um, regardless of what the price range of the townhomes are, the fact that anybody moved into the home zone Ridgedale Drive, especially those on the west side that are above the property, their property values are going to go way down. I mean, by at least five, ten percent or more, because there will be absolutely zero privacy. I mean, those townhomes will be like right in our face. Um, so the fact that they're building a three-hundred-thousand-square-foot townhouse is really is irrelevant. Um, this really all boils down to two different issues, in my opinion, that I'd just like you to consider. Um, one is the church, by their own admission, and all the members of this, these churches have run into financial difficulties. Uh, and so they need to sell the property. The property is zoned for R-five. When we bought our properties,
That's four minutes.
When we bought our property, we bought our properties with the understanding that the city of Lewisville would honor that commitment to have R phone, R-five zoned lots. We assumed at worst that the city would build something church-related on the property or that something, or an R-five lot would be built out there, which would uh, enhance our property values, but certainly wouldn't take away from it. So uh, the fact that a property owner runs into some financial difficulties and needs to sell their property and wants to upzone it to make more money, um, should not have a bearing on the decision to rezone this property. And then the second thing is really just, it boils down to um, what I mentioned earlier, that um, we bought our houses with the understanding that, that there would be R-five zoned lots. Um, there's never really been any serious attempt to build R-five zoned lots back there because I'm in the development business myself, or I was for twenty-plus years. It would not have taken that much effort for the church to have sliced off a little bit more land on their east side.
Your five minutes are up, sir. Thank you.
Can I just wrap up?
Uh, we gave you a chance.
Anyway, I was just going to say that uh, with just a little bit more effort, they could have actually built R-five and could build R-five zoned lots. So, thank you.
The next speaker is William Tabor. Again, please state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Uh, thank you, council. My name is William Tabor. I live at two-thirty-one Roma Drive, uh, in Lewisville. Um, when the. When the zoning maps and other visuals of the area were shown, I live in the, what's the Toll Brothers Townhome condo community that is just east of the general business on the south side of Highland. And I'd just like to point out that we're a fairly dense 101-unit condo complex and everything, have been very well-maintained over the last, you know, 10 years. Property values have increased in there with this type of a higher-density product from, you know, purchase prices of 100 to 300,000, now selling in the 250 to 350,000 range. And, you know, as the different types of product are looked for within the city under vision, you know, 2025, it seems like, you know, that this is meeting the diversity of housing options and the creation of a, you know, another potential thriving neighborhood. I think that, you know, this proposed project fits within the vision of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The next speaker is Bruce Salz. Again, please state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
My name is Bruce Salz. I live at 2878 Ridgedale Drive, directly across from the property being described. I lived there for five years. My family have enjoyed it. We've enjoyed living in Lewisville. I'm opposed to this project primarily for the reasons that my neighbor Ray stated. When we moved in there, it was zoned as R5, and when we fought this approximately three years ago, it was, we fought it successfully, that it was a change of state, that when we moved in there, it was R5, it was our understanding that it would be remained R5. I'm opposed to this. That's all.
Thanks, sir.
Our next speaker is Diana King. Again, please state your name for the record and your address.
Hello, Honorable Durham, Mayor Durham. My name is Diana King and council members. Diana King, and I live at 7038 Rock Ridge Trail in Aubrey, Texas. We started our family in Lewisville, Texas, and built a home in Lewisville, Texas, and have been attending Vista Ridge United Methodist Church for 22 years, so quite a journey, quite some time. Started out right after we were married and then had three children, and now they're 20, 18, and 12. I wanted to just point out a couple things for you guys, and again, I appreciate your time. The first thing is that I am in favor of this rezoning plan. The single-family detached zoning is the highest and the best use of this remnant property, the 4.2 acres on our land. And I also, I should state that I am the lay leader at Vista Ridge United Methodist Church. The proposed zoning use is consistent with the new neighborhood choices of the big move in 2025 Vision Plan, and this project will add an additional $10 million or more to the city tax base on land that is currently tax-exempt. And lastly, the developer has met with the residents of Vista Ridge Estates, as he mentioned, four times, and altered the project significantly in an attempt to accommodate the neighbors, but they continue, as you guys know, to the neighbors on the street that begs up. As we mentioned earlier, the HOA has approved this rezoning. And I just wanted to also mention just a few things that we do in the city of Lewisville and the community. We've been serving Lewisville, our church has been serving Lewisville for 25 years, and again, we've been attending for 22 of those years. And as part of that, we volunteer to support local organizations such as Christian Community Action, the Salvation Army, and Rock Brook Elementary. We provide weekly church services at Arbor House Memory Care Facility and Vista Ridge Nursing and Rehab Center, and we support the Evergreen at Vista Ridge Retirement Community. And we also have a Vista Ridge preschool that supports and offers low-cost preschool education for children ages six months through five years. So we host Easter and Fall festivals for all ages. The Lewisville community is our family, and we have really enjoyed being part of the Lewisville community, and I just want to say thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jim Mustaine. Again, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jim Mustaine and address 367 Dublin Street in Lewisville, Texas, 75067. So I too, Mayor Durham, thank you for having us this evening and council members as well. And I come to speak in favor of the zoning change as well. I operate in the city of Lewisville, a nonprofit organization, loving community, and Vista Ridge United Methodist Church is one of our partner organizations, and I come really tonight just to speak to the value of the church, to our community and the good work that Diane has already mentioned somewhat on that. And I agree that we are at Rock Brook Elementary School. We were there with Vista Ridge members this morning. They took part in National Good Neighbor Day, which was held on September the 17th. I too participate with them at Vista Ridge Nursing Home and Arbor House. Also, I think Diana didn't mention that Vista Ridge was Community Christian Actions Church of the Year last year as well on that. And then as well, this summer, we participated at Central Park, provided a VBS for the community. And so I support the work of and the investment in our community and believe that Vista Ridge United Methodist Church is an excellent community partner. And so again, I would encourage you to vote in favor this evening of the zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ken Cooley. Again, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ken Cooley. I live at 625 East Vista Ridge Mall Drive. I'm a Lewisville resident. I serve on the trustees committee, which is the committee at our church that is responsible for our building, our grounds, and our property. And so that committee's been involved from the very beginning on this land transaction and on the development of the plans that you have seen this evening. And I just, on behalf of that committee, I just ask for your support for this zoning change to allow this project to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Jan Brady.
Hello, my name is Jan Brady. I live at 2869 Ridgedale Drive in Lewisville, Texas. First of all, I would like to thank you all for the privilege of speaking today. Yes, I am in opposition, and I do want to correct something. The HOA has not approved this. I just want to let that be known, that that was a false statement. I would like to direct a few questions, if y'all would let me, to the members of the church. Is that acceptable?
No, ma'am. Just speak to us right now.
Okay, well, with that being said, I'm not going to get to say what I felt the Lord was leading me to say, but I will say this to sum it up, that I believe as a church that you are to witness to people. That is one of the things that the Lord tells us to do. I have lived there since June of 2013, and not one member from this church has come to my door, has sent anything in the mail. So witnessing is, I do not believe, is something that has been done. I just hope and pray that someday, if you, if this were to pass tonight, that this church would regret the day that they have chosen to sell this land. I believe that this land was bought by the church, of course, and it was bought in hopes of growth, which clearly has not happened. And I have to say that as a homeowner on Ridgedale Drive, I believe that I'm suffering. I believe that my neighbors are suffering because of their lack of growth, that we are suffering because they cannot pay their debt. And I hate that. I hate that. It pains me that a church cannot pay their debt for whatever reason it may be. And I do believe, I just can't imagine that they would want these type of homes to be in their back door. I'm going to be looking at it. I don't back up to it, but my, I live in the middle of the street, and what I see now is the church. That's what I get to see when I'm sitting in my living room. And now all I'm going to be able to see are these houses. And it pains me that when Michael and I bought this home, that we were told that it was R5. And I just, I'm here to ask you, to beg you not to vote for this. There's not a person in this room, including you members, that would buy a home on Ridgedale Drive today. If this passes, you just wouldn't do it. And I don't want to sell my home. I bought it to live there. I love it. I love living in Lewisville. I'm a fairly new resident, but I just, I'm having, I'm just really having a hard time believing, first of all, that a church cannot grow.
Mayor, that's four minutes.
There's a reason for it. Are my five minutes up? So I'm just asking you to please vote no. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mary Beth Hardisty Crouch. Again, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor Durham and City Council. My name is Mary Beth Hardisty Crouch. I live at 1325 Falcon Drive, Lewisville 75077. I've lived there for seven years, but I've actually lived in Lewisville on and off for about 35 years. The first time I moved to Lewisville was in 1983. I lived here till about 1988, and then I was here from 1998 until 2000. Came back in 2010 when I was appointed as the pastor of Vista Ridge United Methodist Church. When I came to Vista Ridge, I soon came to know that this is a church that is vibrant, that is alive, that is very engaged with the neighborhood. You've heard some about the ways that we are a part of our neighborhood. But what I want to say to you is that I remember when Vista Ridge built its building 20 years ago, there was very little out there at the corner of Denton Tap and Highland. There was the Vista Ridge Estates, there was the Vista Ridge Mall, and there was Vista Ridge United Methodist Church. Since then, it has become an extraordinary gateway community for Lewisville, and we are proud of being a gateway property for the city of Lewisville and see ourselves as one of the first welcoming places in Lewisville as you come north from the Sam Rayburn. Lots of growth around us in our mission field, which we see to be one square mile around us, and we work very hard to engage with what's happening in our mission field and have for the last 10 years. And we are vibrant, we are healthy, we are paying our bills. We are not seeking to sell this property in order to solve a financial crisis. We just believe that this is the best use for this property at this time. We believe that it is indeed in keeping with the plan, the Vision 2025 plan for the city of Lewisville. We are excited about having more new neighbors, and we are in favor of the change in zoning. But I will also say that as a resident of the city of Lewisville for seven-plus years, I am also in favor and urge you to vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Barry Skyes. Again, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I'm Barry Skyes. My residence is 6410 Frontier Drive, Flower Mound, 75022. Reason I'm speaking, I'm on the core leadership of Vista Ridge United Methodist Church, so I've been involved in this land since 2010, when we decided to move forward with maybe doing something different. When we bought it in 1996, our plan was to put a large sanctuary on it. We were hoping we would grow to that point where it would be a massive sanctuary. That was what was in our building plan. We hadn't grown to the point where we needed that. We've grown to fill up our church, but we're not big enough to put in a 2,000 or 3,000 sanctuary, which we wanted to do. But I wanted to give you a history that in 2010, we met with a local soccer club thinking, well, we'll use the land for a soccer field and see if we can help them out. And we met with the neighbors, and we ran into opposition. 2012, we ran in, we met with a high-end homeowner builder, a townhome builder. They ended up building the preserves to the northwest of this property and ran into opposition and didn't get through there. Then we met with Scoreberg, knowing that they were a high-quality builder, and started with them in 2016, and we've been through this for a year with them, trying to make as many changes as we can. We've given up hundreds of thousands of dollars of profit by changing to what we thought would meet, the best way to meet with the property owners is the one way without going to R5, because R5 just won't work on that piece of property. I've had developers tell me I could give them the property, and they probably couldn't make any money on R5 right there. But anyway, we've worked with them as best we can, and we think we've come up with the best solution possible. So I ask for you to vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are all the speaker cards I have, Mayor. I believe the proponent may want to come back up.
Hey, if you'd like to come back, proponent? Do you all have anything?
I don't have anything else really to add unless the council has questions for me.
Thank you. The council may have some questions in a few minutes. We have a motion to close the public hearing? Close.
Second.
We have a motion to second close the public hearing. All those in favor, second five, I say nay.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Okay. Yep, go ahead.
A lot of talkers, so I want to try to keep my comments brief. Appreciate everybody who came tonight, no matter what your position. It seems sometimes it's difficult to get people involved in their government, and sometimes it takes that first step of going to City Hall over some issue or another, and then you tend to get more involved, and we hope you do. And if you've been here before, then certainly we welcome that you've come back. There's a lot of sides to this, as there are to anything. The first one I would note is that taxable value is not a decision point for me. I'm well aware that it'll have taxable value. I'm aware of everything in this city that has taxable value or may have taxable value or may not, but that's not, I don't make my decision based on that. I make my decision based on a fundamental best and highest use. What is the most likely use for this property that represents the best opportunity for all sides? With that thought in mind, I will point out a few things. It was mentioned that the new houses would have a six-foot side yard. The existing houses have a 13-foot side yard. It's not a big difference. There is a 65-foot space from the back of these townhomes to the back of the closest house in the existing neighborhood by the time you count in both backyards and the alley. And with the addition of an eight-foot privacy board and board fence, I think that creates quite a bit of separation between the two neighborhoods. And if you're 13 feet from your neighbor right now, you already have a house closer by, so that only, that argument only goes so far with me. I'm going to be in favor of this request. I'm gonna be in favor of this request. I think it's not unreasonable, I think it's a good use of the property. I think that the developer has tried to make an effort to accommodate the neighborhood. I think the church has made more than one effort to try and sell this property. They certainly have the right to sell this property, inasmuch as anybody does. The church is not gonna come to the homeowners someday in the future and say, you can't sell your house because I don't like the reason you're doing it. And of course, both sides, in effect, are, the profit motive doesn't matter to me, because that really exists on both sides, so they'd like to make money, and the people who say it'll hurt their home value would like to make money too. Frankly, from history, I have absolutely no reason to expect it to hurt the value. That's simply not been the case with properties in Lewisville. This product, I think we often get wrapped around the axle on the definition estate townhome, and imagine that somehow this is different from a single-family. It's not, it is a single-family product. It differs in side yard and backyard, and that's about it. It's a single-family product, it's, you know, it gets a substantial size. So I could probably go on with about a dozen other good reasons, but I'm gonna be in favor of this, Mayor.
Okay, Councilman Troyer?
I will echo what Councilman Ferguson said about thanking everyone who spoke, both for and against the issue. I don't really have much, much more to say about the issue itself, except that I do think it is the, it appears to be the best use of the property, and I will be voting for.
Councilman Gilmore?
Well, as usual, Councilman Ferguson is very thorough in his conversation, and he's covered many of the points that I had considered. I'd also had the opportunity to watch the P&amp;Z meeting. I talked to a couple of the P&amp;Z commissioners to get their thoughts, both for and against, and I believe that, quite frankly, that the due diligence has been done by the existing owner. They've done a tremendous amount of outreach. I've seen projects come to our council that have had much less outreach than this, and get stopped. You guys did what you were supposed to do, and I appreciate that. As a developer, I need that in my city. So with that, I'm gonna approve this.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Jones?
I'm gonna thank everyone for their comments tonight. Coming from planning and zoning background, I know new projects meet a lot of resistance with new neighbors. I think Councilman Ferguson covered a lot of areas on it. First of which, to me, is the property owner does have a right to sell their property. Profit motive is not the issue. They did, the developer did reach out to the neighbors multiple times, and they're trying to reach an accommodation. It seemed like they've been trying to move the property for a few years, so I'll be voting in favor of this.
I think everything's been said, but I do have some questions, and this is interesting, because I was actually on planning and zoning when this came up several years ago, and it was actually one of the no votes for the project that was then. But Mayor, I know we've closed public hearing, but I do have a question, if I can ask it, of, so, I know Mr. Hackman had said that as soon as this was built, you know, it would reduce your values five to ten percent. I look at it and see it probably is gonna raise yours, but mine is just a guess. Did you talk to any realtors? Did you do any studies, or is this just your best guess?
No, it's from experience, I've been in Lewisville for thirty years.
Okay, so it's, but it's your best guess, you didn't talk to any realtors or do any studies?
I could very easily have done that.
Okay. All right. That's all I had, sir.
I just wanna make sure that we have already closed the public hearing. Okay. Yeah.
Yes, Mayor, so I move to approve the request for the zone change from single-family residential R5 to estate townhouse ETH on this property, with the combination of the variances requested by the developer, plus the two additional commitments made tonight of an eight-foot board-on-board privacy fence to separate this neighborhood from the adjacent area, adjacent neighborhood, and a tree in each backyard of those properties.
Second.
Am I correct? Thank you.
Okay. Obviously, is there a question right now? We'll be right back in just a second.
So I'm gonna amend that motion, so that we do this in two parts, and the first part is simply the zoning change from R5 to ETH on this property. So that is, I move to make that change in zoning.
I'll second the amended.
Okay.
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately four point two zero four acres legally described as Lot One R3, Block A, Vista Ridge United Methodist Church, Edition Phase One, located on the north side of Highland Drive approximately four hundred and ninety-five feet east of Denton Tap Road, from single-family residential district R5 zoning to estate townhouse residential district ETH zoning, correcting the official zoning map preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the public interest and general welfare demand the zoning change and amendment therein made, providing for repealer severability and a penalty and declaring an emergency.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Got the second one?
It's a separate agenda item. Okay, comes later, regular hearings.
Till we're back. Okay.
Public hearing number three, consideration of an ordinance declaring stormwater drainage of the city to be a public utility, and providing for the establishment and calculation of stormwater drainage utility charges and credits. This public hearing is to receive input from the residents and businesses of Lewisville on the establishment of the stormwater utility. The recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption. Director of Public Services Keith Marvin has a presentation for city council consideration.
Okay. Just go ahead, to the city staff.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Well, he's getting my presentation, there we go. There's two items tonight, this is the first one. I've only got one presentation, so I'll cover both items with this.
This is for three and four, correct?
This is for items three and four, yes, sir.
Okay.
So we're talking about stormwater, and specifically creation of a stormwater utility. The question posed is why is it needed? And essentially, when land is converted, when buildings are built, when paving is put down, when surface is covered, we get more water that runs off at a greater volume and greater velocity, causes problems within our drainage collection system. So Texas Local Government Code, Chapter five fifty-two, provides a funding mechanism for paying for drainage projects, for stormwater public education, for operation and maintenance of existing stormwater systems, and describes the basis on which municipal stormwater utility systems can be created, funded, and how fees may be assessed, levied and collected. Next slide, please. A little bit of history in the city of Lewisville. We've been talking about a stormwater utility since as early as nineteen ninety-two, but it was at the twenty-thirteen City Council Retreat that council directed staff to develop a stormwater utility. Staff has worked with the Blue Ribbon Bond Committee and the twenty-twenty-five Committee on Capital Project Prioritization. Staff's been developing a database necessary to operate and bill for the stormwater utility. And then on October twenty-fourth, at the City Council meeting, the City Council directed staff to implement a stormwater utility with a four-dollar per ERU fee, with implementation beginning in FY twenty eighteen. Next slide, please. On this is that prioritized list of capital projects. It's eighteen different projects with a total cost as of October of twenty sixteen, so that's nearly a year ago, a total cost of thirty-three million, seven hundred thousand dollars. Next slide. That's just simply a picture of where those different projects are. Next slide, please. So how are we gonna establish how much to charge for this public utility? And so that is by the impervious area. Impervious area is basically that surface that's been either compacted or covered with a layer of material so that it's resistant to infiltration, the water will run off rather than soak into the ground. It includes, but it's not limited to, compacted soils with a surface treatment of some variety, gravel, crushed stone surfaces, asphalt, concrete, pavement, other parking lots, driveways, sidewalks, private roads, buildings, and any other man-made structures. So here on the screen, I've got an example, it's a single-family residential property, the property lines are the yellow boundary, there is a gray building, a house in this example, and then green pavement. All of those areas are impervious, and water will run off. Next slide, please. So when we established the list of projects and the cost, we looked at how we would fund that, we looked at the opportunity to add those projects to the recent bond election, where we're funding those bonds through ad valorem property taxes versus a stormwater utility. Here, we're suggesting the stormwater utility because it's more fair to the residential property owner. So I've looked at an analysis up here at four dollars per ERU, that each individual property owner will pay forty-eight dollars per year. The total collection is gonna be approximately three million dollars. If we looked at how we would come up with that in ad valorem taxes, we would have to add a little over three cents per one hundred dollars of value to the property tax rate. And looking at the average home in Lewisville of two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, that additional little more than three cents would equate to sixty-six dollars per year in additional ad valorem tax. So under the tax proposal, each resident would pay an additional eighteen dollars a year. So by doing the stormwater fee, we're putting the burden more on the commercial properties than on the residential properties. There'll be another slide in a minute that actually shows that breakdown a little bit more. So you've heard me mention ERU, that's Equivalent Residential Unit. Most cities base their rate on impervious area and a set, a common residential charge, that's the ERU, or Equivalent Residential Unit. It's a standard measure for stormwater utilities used on a national basis and widely here in the state of Texas. The Lewisville ERU is twenty-eight hundred square feet. That's actually based on a twenty-four hundred square foot average home size within the city of Lewisville, and then four hundred additional feet of impervious area, primarily driveways and sidewalks. Next slide, and go one more, please. So what I've got here is where that four dollars per ERU falls in with our standard cities that we compare ourselves against, and we're right there in the middle. Four dollars is a good average amongst our comparison cities. I will point out that the only city within the DFW area that we would compare ourselves to that does not have a stormwater utility is the city of Carrollton, all the way on the left side of the graph, as shown as a zero cost. That's the only city of our size, or of any significant size in the DFW area, that does not have a stormwater utility. Next slide, please. This is actually the same example that you saw earlier with the impervious area, but now it has the cost on the side. The total parcel size is sixty-three hundred square feet, twenty-four hundred square foot building, four hundred additional square feet of impervious area for that total of twenty-eight hundred. Because it's a single-family residential, we're gonna charge that four dollars per year, and for comparison purposes, their typical water and sewer bill is sixty-six dollars and fifty-two cents. That does reflect the rates that will be in effect October first, or were in effect as of October first. This next slide, getting back to...
That is four dollars per month.
I'm sorry?
Four dollars per month.
Four dollars per month, that's correct. This next slide that I mentioned earlier, the right-hand side, a small circle, is twenty-eight percent of the impervious area in the city of Lewisville is from residential property, seventy-two percent of the impervious area is from commercial or other multifamily, industrial, anything else that would be of a greater intensity or a larger area of impervious area. And that piece down at the bottom talks about equivalency. So we're charging four dollars per ERU, each resident, single-family resident would pay that four dollars per ERU every month. The commercial side, we're gonna, we're gonna equate that to one dollar and forty-three cents per thousand square feet. Numerically, those are the same per square foot cost. So that one dollar per forty-three, one dollar and forty-three cents per thousand square feet is how we will calculate the bills for the commercial class of properties, including multifamily and that sort of thing. Next slide, please. Here's a commercial example. Again, the yellow boundary on the outside is the property boundary, the green is the paving, and then the gray is the building. This is actually a service center up on four oh seven. You'll see the total areas, they're one dollar and forty-three cents per thousand square feet, equates to a stormwater fee of sixty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents on a monthly basis. And you can see for comparison, this business's water and sewer is approximately nine hundred and eighty dollars per month for their typical bill. Next slide shows an example of how we're gonna build this, we're gonna use the residential, I'm sorry, we're gonna use the billing system for our water and wastewater utility, and you can see on this, there's a highlighted line that simply says drainage fee. In this example, it's a resident, or residential bill with that four dollars on there. Next slide, please. This is, again, a breakdown of who will be paying for the fees. Again, twenty-seven point seven percent, or twenty-eight percent, is residential, single-family residential property. Sixty-six point eight is non-single-family residential, that's commercial, industrial, multifamily, and then five point five percent is governmental. The city will be paying their piece, the county and the federal government will be paying their piece. The way the legislation is written, the state government is exempt from the stormwater fee. Next slide, please. So again, as of October of last year, we had thirty-three point seven million dollars in needed drainage projects. This is the funding mechanism to be able to perform those projects, and as you know, the cost escalation of those projects is such that it is no longer thirty-three point seven, it's probably closer to thirty-six million at this point. We anticipate, once we begin collecting in January of twenty eighteen, that this fund will collect approximately three million dollars per year. Initially, that fee will primarily, will only be dedicated to those capital projects until some later point in the future when we've been able to fund that backlog of projects. Going into the next slide, we talk a little bit about the outreach that we intend to do. Once everything has passed, we will perform public outreach to notify people of this impending bill that will begin coming in January. Some of the tools that we will have, there's a snapshot on the screen, we've been developing a GIS-based tool that we'll use, as well as several other tools to reach out and notify people about this upcoming billing that will begin in January. Next slide, please. As far as recommendations go, we do, again, recommend that you adopt this enabling ordinance, as well as the fee ordinance that are on the agenda tonight. The fee ordinance establishes that we would begin billing in January of twenty eighteen. We are recommending the four-dollar stormwater fee per ERU on the single-family residential, and a dollar forty-three per one thousand square feet for non-single-family residential properties. That stormwater fee would allow for construction of capital projects, and we would recommend that the council do an annual review of the fee to ensure that we're keeping up with the cost of those capital projects during your budget period. Next slide. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions? No? Okay. Secretary, secretary, do we have any speakers?
No, sir.
Okay. Have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close. Second.
We have a motion, a second to close public hearing. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Let's start with you, Councilman Daniels.
I make a motion to approve the ordinance as presented.
Second.
Okay. City Secretary, excuse me, counselor.
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending Chapter sixteen Utilities of the Lewisville City Code by adding Article ten, Stormwater Drainage Utility System, declaring the adoption of the Municipal Drainage Utility Systems Act, Subchapter C of Chapter five five-two, Texas Local Government Code, and declaring stormwater drainage to be a public utility. Establishing a municipal stormwater drainage utility system, providing for the establishment and calculation of stormwater drainage utility charges and credits, providing penalties and remedies for non-payment of charges, providing for repealer and severability... and remedies for non-payment of charges, providing for repealer and severability, and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Mayor, I've got just a little context for this, if you don't mind.
Okay.
I'm glad we're doing it. I'm, I'm, this is a tough one for everyone to, to deal with, but I need to take a second to remind folks that this watershed extends to Double Oak. It extends into parts of Copper Canyon, Lantana, Flower Mound, all the way past the high school. All of that impermeable surface, we don't have control over. And so as those areas continue to build out, we get more and more water. And I don't know if anybody's been down to Timber Creek to see the original Gabian Wall project, but that was, it's an amazing project, but it was not cheap, and they never are. But that is protecting those residents that live along that area and protecting those resources. And the problem with that extra impermeable surface and more water and more Gabian Wall is that it pushes that erosion and that damage, it pushes it down the watershed. So putting this in place will help us to mitigate that, because it's not going to get any better. So I'm, I'm proud of council for stepping up to do this, I'm proud of the engineering and, and the design that has gone into this from staff. It's been a long and heavy lift, but it's something that, again, we need to have and we need to protect those properties for our residents. So I appreciate that. Thank you for letting-
Any further discussion? Anybody? Okay. We have a motion on the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Public hearing number four. Consideration of an ordinance amending the fee schedule by adding stormwater drainage utility charges. By establishing a $4 ERU, the stormwater drainage utility will ensure that the currently unfunded $33,700,000 priority draining projects can be completed in 12 to 19 years, depending upon cash and/or bond funding. The recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Okay. Do we have any speakers on this? Okay. We have a motion to close public hearing?
Move to close.
Second.
Okay. Motion, second to close. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
I move, move adoption of the ordinance as per the caption.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the Lewisville City Code, Chapter 2, Article 8, Fees, Section 2-201 Fee Schedule by adding stormwater drainage utility charges, providing for repealer severability and effective date, declaring an emergency.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Visitor Citizen Forum. At this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Council, I have a number of visitors' cards at this meeting. Our first visitor is Alexander Lindy. Please, if you'll please state your name and address for the record, and just a reminder, you have five minutes.
All right. My name is Alex Lindy. I go to Kilo High School. I live on 582 Springer Lane. And the reason I came here is about my sidewalks on Springer Lane, Springer Lane, and some sweat, they have cracks and bumps all over it, and, and I've been slipping all over them like five, six times, and I get bruises and bumps all over them. Then I was just like to see if they can get repaired and fixed and fit and flatter and better.
Okay.
And more perfect and not bumped or cracked or anything.
Okay. Thank you. Could we get somebody from staff to talk to this gentleman?
David, would you please talk to him?
Someone will speak to you here in a minute on that. And here he is right here, so, thank you.
Our next speaker is Chris Nelson. Just a reminder to please state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Chris Nelson. I live at 422 Moens, 75057. I feel like I'm old friends since I talked to y'all a couple of weeks ago, maybe a little longer. This time, I'm not coming with many complaints. I have some thanks for the council and the city staff. First, want to thank y'all for doing the North Point Community Meeting, especially the code enforcement. I've been having problems with some neighbors and some other issues. The staff and Bobby Shooter and his boss resolved those. I'm, I'm happy with it. Sometimes it just, you just have to talk to the right people to get stuff done, and that, that happened, and y'all guys should accommodate them for doing their jobs very well and listening. I also want to thank the city staff for talking to Texas New Mexico Power about keeping the infrastructure, keeping the trees out of the power lines. We have above-ground power in Old Town and North Point, and I did not have any resolution. I went several times to the utility company, they would not come out, and the city resolved that. I appreciate that. I also liked a special thanks for Brenda Martin for talking, working with me on what I discussed with y'all last time. I appreciate it. Most of the things have been resolved. I'll keep an eye on the, the county. I'm happy with the city. Y'all guys do a great job. And I said I was all praises and everything. One small issue, Western days, really liked the electronic billboard, but you need to change the dates to where, when the streets are actually shut down, not the dates of the event. Said the 29th and the 30th. Church Street was actually closed down on the 27th, and that, I have to listen to my boss, that's also my wife, she, she's the one who drives the, does the driving in the carpool, so she was not happy about that. But just, just watch the dates. And also for the 5K run, please let us know when it goes through our neighborhood, because we knew there was going to be one, but they didn't tell us where it was, and it wasn't on the city page. So I wake up Saturday morning, there's a 5K run. I get to wave at the people until I can get out of my neighborhood. But other than that, I'm fairly happy. And then again, a special thanks to Brenda Martin for putting up with me. And thank you, council, for listening to me for another time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Judy Walters. Again, please state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
My name's Judy Walters, and I live at 722 Creekwood Court in Lewisville. I came this evening to make a personal request of a street sign that's misspelled, and it's been that way for a long, long time. And I was born and raised in Lewisville. I'm a third-generation Lewisville person, and it's kind of a sentimental thing, as I'm getting older, I'm about the only one to step up and ask if W-A-L-T-E-R-S could be changed to W-O-L-T-E-R-S. And I've done some research with James Kunkel, and I'm a historical person, and I hope to add to that here in the city, maybe volunteer over here, but that's my request. I'm coming before you tonight to ask if that street sign could be spelled correctly.
Okay. If I step too far on here, just tell me. I have, I got a letter from you, and I did look at that. I've gone back to records prior to 1925, and I cannot find anywhere that it had that, the, the spelling. So if you have anything, a plat, or a deed, or something like that, if you would get to me, I'll see what we can, I'll see what we can work-
Okay. Well, I've gotten some things to James to, to prove the credibility of the W-O-L-T-E-R-S, and our name is in history books, and-
I know the name is there. I'm trying to find on a plat that it's-
A plat for, I'm sorry.
Officially listed by the, the street to that name, the spelling there.
Okay. Well, I may not, I may need to talk to James to understand exactly what that is or how to do that. I'm not real savvy on that.
Was it deed or something like that?
A deed to the property?
To the property that's on that street?
Uh-huh.
And it was saying, everything I've seen has it the way the city has it listed right now.
Okay. Well, see, my, my grandfather died in 1929, and so, and he was a builder in Lewisville. So how would I research that? I need help.
I looked on the public record, and I haven't found anything at this point. So if you, if you could just have something in your old records, maybe, property that they owned, or property that was in their name?
Right. Most of it was on Main Street. Both of my grandparents had homes on Main Street.
This would be on the street for Walters, the way you think it should have been originally.
Yeah, where it is.
I haven't been able to find anything-
Okay.
-that showed that, so.
Great. Thanks for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
James, if you could step out with them. Thank you.
Our last speaker during Visitor Citizen Forum is Bonnie Boyd Chapman. Again, if you'll please state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
I'm a native of Texas, Denton County. I was born in Denton. I moved to Lewisville in 1978. I am 74 years old. I live at 301 Parkwood Place in, in Lake Cities. There is, something has come to my mind, many things actually, but one is the lack of a signal light at Fox Avenue that enters into Creekside. And I did witness a girl almost being hit by a car near the bridge that leads to the freeway. She was trying to cross. There is no crosswalk, there is no signal light, and I'm witnessing, because I live in that area in Lake Cities, that it's getting very difficult to exit onto Fox from, say, Creekside. And I can exit on Bel Air, but that makes another mile or two to my mileage. But anyway, if, I don't know what we could do about a signal light. With the increase of the population, I do believe this should be addressed, especially since I've seen young children trying to cross and almost being hit by automobiles. Surely, we don't have to wait for 50 or 80 people to be maimed before the city will step forward and protect our children. Also, our people who drive in that area, who exit and enter into the community, if you would take that into consideration, I'd greatly appreciate it. I have heard other people in the residence area mention this. Obviously, it has not been brought before the council, and I do appreciate it. And I will speak, if I can briefly speak about bullying, I'm noticing, as a senior citizen, I have been bullied in Lewisville. And I did mention to the young man about the children being bullied, and he gave me his card, but I don't think Lewisville realizes senior citizens have been bullied in Lewisville. And in fact, I have a neighbor that has been bullying me. It's a rent property, and the police have been trying to help me with it, and I see a little progress, but still, the landlady will not come forward to actually address the problem thoroughly. I have to have cameras and pictures of pit bulldogs. I have to show that these people are giving us the finger and pulling down their clothes. And, and the police, I will actually say, has helped thus far, but it's not over. And I would love this council and the community of Lewisville to look after Lake Cities and, and a number of senior citizens in our area with a lot of this rent property next door to homeowners. I, I've been a homeowner. I am a homeowner. I pay my taxes, but yet it seems like I have no really help. I have spent $1,500 on just cameras, and I've also put up a fence, but it seems like it's not enough. And I'm, I'm just wanting to make myself on record that I am tired of being bullied. And like I say, this gentleman had talked about the youth being bullied. He gave me his card tonight, and he said he would help me, but I still need further acknowledgement and help. And I will close and say, let's look at a sign for exiting onto Fox from this Creekside, because we may have some children being harmed. Thank you kindly. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you.
Chief Powell.
Do you have anything else? Okay. Going to the consent agenda?
Consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Mayor, I've received no cards.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Now we're down to regular hearings.
Item eight. Consideration of a preliminary plat with three associated variances on a 4.204 acre tract of land located on the north side of Highland Drive, approximately 495 feet east of Denton Tap Road. The following three variances are requested. A, to allow front entry. B, to decrease the right-of-way width from 50 feet to 40 feet. And C, to allow tubular steel fencing with live screening along the western boundary line. P and Z recommended approval of the preliminary plat by a vote of four to one. The recommendation is that the city council approve the preliminary plat and associated variances as set forth in the cap, caption. Both Richard Ludke, Planning Director, and Noah Flabliano from Skolber Company are present to address any questions.
Okay. Go ahead, Neil.
Okay. Let's get that motion back out there. So I move to approve the request for, let me scroll back and see exactly what my wording is, sorry. For the preliminary plat and three associated variances, and also the agreement to provide an eight-foot board-on-board privacy fence across the east side of the property, and a tree in each backyard, and I believe that's the east side of the property. Okay.
Okay.
That is my motion.
Okay. Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Agenda item nine. Consideration of four variances associated with proposed fire station number eight located on the southwest corner of Lakewood Hills Drive and Josie Lane. The following four variances are requested. A, to allow a tubular steel screening fence with shrubs along the western property line. B, to allow a commercial driveway width of 57 feet wide. C, to allow a control of access of 15.74 feet from a residential road. And D, to waive the screening while requirement along the southern property line adjacent to the amenities center lot. The recommendation is that the city council approve the requested variance as set forth in the caption. Planning Director Richard Ludke is available for any questions.
Okay. Anybody having questions? Okay. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Councilman Jones to approve, and a second by Councilman Troyer. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Item 10. Consideration of a variance to the deceleration lane modification, modifications regulations on property located along Midway Road adjacent to the Midway Pump Station. The developer is requesting a variance to allow a modified deceleration lane configuration. If the variance is approved, the developer will, will plat, rezone the property, and submit an engineering site plan for the necessary site improvements. The recommendation is that the city council approve the variance as set forth in the caption, with the condition that the developer submits a plat and engineering site plan generally conforming with the attached site plan exhibit within six months. City Engineer David Salmon and Robert Allen from First Industrial are both available to answer any questions.
Okay. Does council have any questions at this time? Okay. Okay. We have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the variance as set forth in the caption above with the condition that the developer submits a plat and engineering site plan generally conforming with the attached site plan exhibit within six months.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Second by Councilman Troyer. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Consideration of four variances on property located at the southeast corner of East Vista Ridge Mall Drive and MacArthur Boulevard. The applicant is asking for the following variances. A, to waive the requirement of constructing a right-turn lane at the intersection of MacArthur and Vista Ridge Mall Drive. B, to allow driveway spacing between adjacent lots to be less than 230 feet apart. C, to allow a commercial driveway to be less than 250 feet from an intersection. And D, to allow a commercial driveway to be less than 250 feet from an intersection. The recommendation is that the city council approve the variances as set forth in the caption. City Engineer David Salmon is available to address any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions? Okay. Councilman Jones?
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Now we're down to reports. We're just going to start at this end down here. Not Nika?
Nothing, sir.
Okay.
Mayor, councilmembers, park fans, just a reminder that next Wednesday at 6:00 PM at the community room at the municipal annex building, the Parks and Recreation Department will be hosting an open house for the update to our master plan. We invite the community to come out and give us input about how we can continue to create great places for them to come and play.
Okay. What is that date?
It is October 11th.
Okay. Thank you. Chief?
Mayor, I'd just like to remind everybody that on Saturday, October 14th, at our central fire station at 188 North Valley Parkway, we will be hosting our annual open house at the fire department. The times for that will be from 10:00 in the morning to 3:00 in the afternoon. As always, we'll be having fire demonstrations, safe house mages for the kids, simulated vehicle rescues. We'll have several of our apparatus, tools and equipment on hand for the kids to look at and touch and climb on and get pictures taken. Our friends from the police department will be there with some of their really neat new apparatus that they have and a lot of the tools and equipment that they use for the kids to look at as well. Our fire safety clowns will be on site. Our pipes and drums will be on site to perform. We'll have helicopters from PHI or Medical and Care Flight on site for the kids to look at. Carter Blood Care will be on site if anybody wants to give blood. We also have a new group there this year called Haley's Heroes. They will be on site to do mouth swabs, so if you want to become part of the Be a Match and, and maybe be a donor, bone marrow transplant or stem cell donor, they will be on site to be able to get people registered for that as well. Our friends from the Louisville Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association, also known as LCP AAA, will also have their booth that's really popular there every year to do ident kids. So we just ask that everybody put this on their calendar, spend a couple, come spend a couple hours with us. Let us get to know all of our citizens and neighbors in the community and get to know their kids and let them see us and get to know us. As always, we'll have hot dogs, chips, drinks, and popcorn as well to give away, so come spend some time with us on the 14th.
Thank you. Hey, Sam Goller?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay. Police Department?
Just a couple of quick things for you. First, as a reminder about National Night Out tomorrow night. Great opportunity to get out, meet with your neighbors, get to know them a little bit better, plus a great opportunity for us to, you know, meet with the citizens as well. We go around all of the events that we're aware of and just say hello and spend some time with our fellow residents. The second thing, you'll notice on my shoulders, the chief has authorized pink epaulet loops for the month of October in recognition of National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. So if you see those pink epalets, that's what that's all about.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, the lake level's down just a little bit, a little more than half a foot below the conservation pool.
Okay. Thank you. Gina? Thank you, Brenda, for the work on, with that gentleman. Perry?
Safe by the bell. Dave, come on, just go.
Okay.
Very quickly, I understand there's maybe some missing, not misinformation, but just some conflicting information regarding our Valley Ridge ribbon-cutting ceremony. I just wanted to clarify that the ribbon-cutting ceremony is next Monday, October 9th, and it will be at 10 o'clock in the morning. So, and we expect it might last maybe about an hour, I think, in speaking with James with some of the things we've got planned. Forty-five minutes to an hour, so probably from 10 to 11.
Location of parking?
Yeah, just add, add on to that. Again, it will be on Valley Ridge Boulevard immediately west of Keighley. And the parking will be at the Stephen Albacca Service Center, which is on the opposite side of Keighley. And I've been speaking with our police department, and we will have someone there to help people cross the street.
Thank you. Nothing, Mr. Ferris?
No, sir.
Okay.
Always like being the first councilman to speak, because I can say everything first.
Well, don't take everybody's thunder here.
Still everybody's thunder. I, I had such a great time this weekend. What a fabulous Western Days. I think maybe the best one yet. So, I mean, once again, such a huge thanks to everybody that was involved, the staff, the volunteers, everything just worked perfectly. And I still remember sitting out Saturday night in Wayne Ferguson Plaza and just watching everybody have fun. It just, it, it felt great. So a great job by everybody and everybody that had anything to do with it. But I do have to give a special recognition to whoever played the water droplet in the parade. So after the parade, she was hoisted into the back of a pickup, and as driving away in the pickup, she was still waving, even though there was nobody there, she was still waving to the people. So I thought it was hilarious, but what a great event. And also, I want to remind everybody, I always talk about you can never have more fun picking up trash. Well, how about planning, doing some planning? So KLB on Saturday, October 24th, is doing their National Planning Day, and they're doing it out at Lisdola. Lisdola, of course, L-I-S-D, outdoor learning area. So Lisdola is going to start at 9:00, go till about 11:30, and all those tools and everything will be there. Just show up and you get to plant some plants. So, lot of fun.
Brenda, do you want to reveal the identity of Willie Water?
Yes, that was Renee Pinella, our accounting manager, and she had been looking forward to doing that for a while and was so happy to be able to do it. She had a blast. She said the pace of the parade, though, was a little faster than she thought it would be. She felt like jogging at times. And she wanted a special shout out to Councilmore Gilmore for giving her a ride at the end.
The alternative was not an option.
It took about five minutes to hoist her into the pickup.
But she would not come out of that suit. She didn't want any child to be, have their, their visions ruined by having somebody coming out of, so it was awesome. She did a great job.
And I'm glad to know now it's Willie Water.
It's Willie Water.
Okay, I did not know that.
Okay, I know why the parade slowed down a little bit then. I just want to kind of reiterate what Brent said and just congratulate the staff all over the city for a great job for Western Days. This year, I was prepared, had my own hat and, and boots, and I'll be, I'll be working on that custom belt buckle for next year.
Okay. Did you?
Ditto on the Western Days. Thank you all for all the hard work. You know what amazes me is how quickly our staff can get those 800 barricades up and down. It's, 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 it's an art. I don't know how they do it. It's amazing. But a huge thanks go out to those guys behind the scenes, making sure that we stay safe. With that, now that Texas weather has turned away from instantaneous heat stroke, you need to get out to Leela. We have some wonderful night hikes and nature walks and bird walks going on through October. Just hop on to the latest city news, and you can register for any one of the hikes that are coming. And it's a perfect time to get out there. All the critters are moving and migrating, and it's, it's, it's really cool. That's all I have, Mayor.
Chief Manager?
Here in council, I always want to thank staff after the Western Days event. I think it's, there's nowhere that's more apparent than Western Days, that we are a city that works without silos. Our departments work hand in hand and just do a phenomenal job. So I always want to say thank you to all of the staff for outstanding Western Days.
Yeah. Ditto on what everybody said about the staff, that, that it all worked out very well. Thank you. Council Ferguson?
So I'm going to precede my comments with fair warning. I'm going to fill out a speaker card for the next council meeting and request the council consider alternating the direction up and down the council from which it takes comment.
Ditto.
And then, then see who you send out in the foyer with me.
If we do that, I'm going to start taking MCL comments.
Actually, I'd be happy if we just shifted one down and then start over, so then everybody gets fair play. So, you know, at this point, what do you say about Western Days? I'll, I have to say something. First of all, there isn't anybody in, throughout the city that doesn't have some part of this, this operation. So, and it's hard to, to single out any one area and say, wow, what a great job. And at the same time, you want to start just naming the list of department after department, saying, man, they did a great job, they did a great job. But it was a, it was a well-run event, seemed to be a lot of happy people there. I think we did us proud. I would just put it that way. And, you know, thanks, thanks to everyone who had a role, which would be everyone. So with that, let me read the MCL grand events, and no, you cannot have them, councilman. Maybe you can. Public events, we have garden secrets class. They're presenting Keyhole Gardening on October 5th. That's Keep Lewisville Beautiful is doing that. Blue Anjou Yoga Music and Wellness Festival is conducting their Yoga for All on October 7th. The Lake Cities Ballet will present again this year, La Ballet de Dracula, which, if you've not seen it, I just, you gotta go see this performance. It's nothing, make no assumptions about it. This is, this is the local version of Cirque du Soleil. It's acrobatics, it's funny, it's spooky, it's, it's music, it's dance, it's just, it's all manner of entertainment. It's a spectacular show, so, you know, get rid of your assumptions about going to a ballet and tell yourself you're going to go see some real entertainment. And I think you'll come back and go, wow, that's pretty amazing. So obviously, I'm a big fan. So moving on, Spirit Led will have a presentation on October 14th entitled, "I'm Here Movement." Our Productions Theater Company is presenting Haunted from October 26th through the 29th. The Acting Studio is presenting Little Shop of Horrors from October 27th through the 29th. And then there's always yoga in the plaza and the acoustic jams every Friday that are pretty also amazing, by the way. And then we're getting ready to crank up the Rocktober concert starting on the 10th and then the 17th, 24th, and of course, the big blowout on Halloween itself, the 31st. The art exhibit continues for Darren Fagan sculptures entitled Earth and Beyond through October 14th. And Val's Artist Choice, which literally means what the artist wanted to put on display, so their choice, continues in the North Gallery through October 28th, and that's the end of the list. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Councilman Troyer?
Well, being at the end, I just echo what everybody else said about Western Days. Thank the staff and everyone involved.
Yeah. Counselor? Chief Secretary? Officer, thank you for your service to the community. Don't read the executive session?
Closed session in accordance with Texas Government Code Subchapter D, Section 551.072, Real Estate Property Acquisition, Section 551.087, Economic Development, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations.
We'll now go into closed session.
Back in session, and we still have a forum present. The mayor has recused himself for the next item. So do y'all read this item, or do we go straight to the motion? Councilman Troyer?
I move to authorize the city manager or his designated to sign all documents necessary to purchase the approximately .76 acres located at 7, or at 912 Timber Creek, Lewisville, Texas, known as Timber Creek Acres Block B, Lot 12A, in Lewisville, Denton County, Texas, for $25,000, and to purchase the approximately .46 acres located at 914 Timber Creek, Lewisville, Texas, known as Timber Creek Acres Lot B, Block B, Lot 11, in Lewisville, Denton County, Texas, for $20,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Move adjourn.
Second.
Second.
We're adjourned.